Place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, first order of business please.
Muchas gracias.
Mr. Zion moves, Mr. LaBange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Estos asuntos convocatorios se van aprobando. La gente de la red de representantes del asunto 9 es una confirmación del oficial de la acción. John Boyajin.
The House Community Development Report has been submitted to Public Carrying Health's Committee.
Se acabó. Adincia pública en comité. Asunto 9 ahora está pendiente, tenemos un reporte del comité recomendando aprobación. Otro número que sea su presentación sobre asunto número 9. Actuario, abrace el voto para esta confirmación. ¿Se rese voto? Le tabulice con teo. Once, sí.
Mr. Boyajin. Mr. LaBange, would you tell Mr. Boyajin he's just been confirmed?
Señor Boyajin ha sido confirmado. Señor Boyajin ha sido confirmada, felicidades. Gracias por su servicio a la ciudad. La gente de la audiencia, uno a cinco son asuntos para audiencias públicas, confirmación de... Las acciones para seguridad, para la defensa de seguridad, asuntos cinco, tengo tarjeta de parto del público, del resto del uno al cuatro, tengo... Petición para presentación del público, por tanto, la audiencia se abre y se cierra. Uno al cuatro, alguien desea que trabaja como especial, niuno, actuario, abra ese voto, cierre ese voto, etabulese conteo, once, sí, han sido aprobados. Asunto número seis también es una audiencia pública, con... Si lo debe enfrirse la audiencia y coordinar esta audiencia para ordenanza para el 3 de junio, asunto número seis. Dependiente y no tengo tarjeta de parto del público para comentar el público, por tanto, la audiencia se abre y sin oposición será aplazado este asunto hasta el 3 de junio, procedamos. Pública. No tengo peticiones del público para hablar con el Consejo Municipal, asunto número siete.
Yes, Mr. President, they're about ready to hand out an amending motion that we introduced this morning that would allow us to extend the hours per... One hour each day allows to charge valet parking and conditions to go back to the current in six months unless action is taken. And like to ask for an I vote on that amending motion, which I think may be handed out, yes, and Hal Burton seconded the motion.
Una moción, una enmienda, ha sido distribuida. Si no hay diálogo adicional o repaso adicional, sin protesta, entonces consideremos asunto número siete con este cambio. Actuario, abra ese voto, cierre ese voto, etabulese conteo, doce, sí. Este ha sido aprobado, procedamos. Asunto número ocho. Un ordenanza tocando el programa de bienestar de salud para los... Lados que han sido jubilados, asunto ocho está pendiente, no tengo petición del público para comentar, por tanto, la audiencia se abre y se cierra. Alguien necesita comentario sobre asunto ocho, no, no, actuario, abra ese voto. Cierre ese voto, etabulese conteo, trece, sí, asunto ocho ha sido aprobado. Procedamos.
Items ten through twenty-one are items for which public carers have been held.
Diez a veintuno, son audiencias que han tenido, asuntos que han tenido audiencia pública, diez al veintuno. No hemos hecho para reconsiderar asunto doce E, del nueve de mayo. Pues tengo una moción sobre plantas, asunto doce, eh?
Item twelve and its entirety.
Doce?
Yeah, let me get the item number, they didn't show my...
Members, we have a request, a motion for reconsideration of item twelve E.
Será asunto doce E, pedido por la señora Perry. Abra ese voto, para reconsiderar ese asunto, cierre ese voto, etabulese conteo, trece, sí. Este asunto ha sido reconsiderado, señora Perry. Hice un error, ese es el asunto equivocado. Procedamos entonces al... Los asuntos en la agenda de hoy, diez a veintuno, actualmente están pendientes petición para no estar crisiado como especial, la gente del día de hoy, señor Parks. Diecisiete y dieciocho. Especial por el señor Parks, asunto número diez también, señor Holden.
Then I'll have fourteen and twenty-one.
Catorce, veintuno.
Call ten and seventeen special, thank you.
Catorce, veintuno, el asunto especial por el señor Holden. ¿Algún otro?
Any other specials?
Algún otro. Asuntos diez a veintuno están pendientes, asunto diez, catorce, diecisiete, dieciocho y veintuno han sido actualizados. Como especial, el resto de los asuntos, actuario, abra ese voto, cierre ese voto, etabulese conteo, trece, sí, esos han sido aprobados. Procedamos. Asuntos que no han tenido audiencias públicas, asunto veintidós a cuarenta y dos. Tengo tarjeta de parto del público, el treinta y dos, treinta y nueve. Luego mientras se actualiza esto como especial, señor Labaj, señor Holden.
Twenty-one and twenty-five.
Veintiuno y veinticinco.
Twenty-one has been called special, twenty-five.
I'm sorry, twenty-five and twenty-seven.
Veinticinco y veintisiete.
Called special by Mr. Holden, twenty-seven called special by Mr. Holden, Ms. Grul.
I was gonna ask something to go forthwith, so when we're ready.
Mr. Pacheco.
Señor Pacheco. Treinta y cuatro, por señor Pacheco.
Any other specials, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, twenty-nine F, es un cambio técnico.
Has that amendment been circulated?
Yes.
Ya se ha distribuido el cambio, sí. Si no hay protesta, consideraremos veintinueve F. No seende, algún otro? No, el resto, los asuntos, actuario, abra ese voto. Cierre ese voto, etabulese conteo, catorce, sí, estos asuntos han sido aprobados, incluyendo veintinueve F con ese cambio. Treinta y tres que se ha enviado al alcalde. Veintiocho también que se ha enviado al alcalde. Asunto número cinco, asunto especial, ya que hay tarjeta del público. Para hacer presentación, antes de proceder con asunto número cinco, señor Reyes, tienes una petición. Para sobre uno de los asuntos en la agenda de hoy, sí. Asunto treinta y nueve. Tenemos un miembro de la junta directiva presente. Me gustaría... Tratar con asunto... Treinta y nueve, ya que tiene un oficial elegido, si no desea hacerse comentario antes de... Pasar al público. Sí, gracias, colegas, tenemos una moción, una resolución. Que este Consejo Municipal ha apoyado, de estas es porque este Consejo Municipal ha notado la necesidad de tratar... Con una necesidad bastante crítica para los jóvenes y las familias salariales de Belmont y el... La construcción de una escuela estamos pidiendo, por tanto, y le pido su apoyo. Para en ti, mandar un mensaje a la junta escolar de que tienen que ser en competición de treinta años. Ya que las condiciones... De esa comunidad están... Empirando. La necesidad de proveer escuelas con treinta y seis, veintiséis asientos. Es ese área, ese área es un área muy muy pobre, con esta resolución podemos mandar un mensaje claro a los miembros de la junta directiva escolar y... En nombre de los... En nombre de nuestros jóvenes, familias, niños, estamos... Tomando construcción todos en la ciudad, construir una escuela aquí de nuevo, generar este vacío. Las condiciones están en un... Momento muy muy determinado, los niños están siendo transportados a otra escuela, no podemos esperar más, apoyando esta solución. La escuela será construida dentro de los siguientes tres años, nos permitirá... Mejorar una clase de vida que se necesita ya por mucho tiempo y nos pondremos en una posición... Para una mejor negociación, esto es un inicio, también llegamos a un punto de... Hay que demostrar que sí, valoramos las vidas de nuestros niños, deseamos crear una solución... Para la transportación, a través de autobuses y queremos proveer a nuestra familia la misma calidad de vida que cualquier otra familia desea. En el resto lo sea, por tanto, con esto pido un voto unánime en esta resolución, quiero dar las gracias al miembro de la junta directiva José Weisar, del distrito, quiero compartir con ustedes que el otro día... Tuvimos un evento histórico, tuvimos la profesora Gloria Molina, senador Cedillo. Asambleísta Jackie Goldberg, representante con... Crerista... Fireball, Fabiantos, de acuerdo... Sobre lo mismo, al mismo tiempo apoyando la construcción... De una escuela en el lugar de Belmont, hemos esperado mucho tiempo, ya no... Tuvimos que jugar fútbol político sobre ese asunto, el alcalde Han lo ha apoyado escrito. Una declaración, creo que estamos todos juntos, por favor, aquí... Demostrar una presencia unificada, gracias señor Reyes.
The council calls for a school member, Jose Weisar, to be followed by Stephanie Landrigan, Joe Edmiston, Mia Lehrer, and Glenn Gritzer.
Bueno, sí, es presente, bueno, sí, es miembro del Consejo Municipal, primero quiero dar las gracias al director del concejal Reyes por presentar este asunto nuevo. Como prioridad decir proveer y presentar al distrito, escuela de Los Ángeles, a la conservatorio de Santa Monica y para que nos... Llevar a cabo este plan, según si que hace un año pedimos un apoyo unánime para completar... La escuela de Belmont, en todo ese Consejo Municipal, reconoce la necesidad de construir esta preparatoria y dejar de transportación, se nos ha estado hablando sobre esto ya por mucho tiempo. Y después de este tiempo parece que nos olvidamos de los efectos reales que afecta a los niños y problemas que ocurren por esta transportación y también el problema... El problema también que... Crea un horario a través de todo el año y experiencia en este día, hoy esta semana, el distrito escolar tiene una oportunidad finalmente finalizar este asunto y así proceder, como ustedes saben, el distrito decidió un año pasado proceder y completar el proyecto. Es afortunadamente... Una falla. Abajo dentro de la tierra, por tanto, paramos porque queríamos asegurar que íbamos a construir una preparatoria en un lugar muy seguro para subir todo lo mío. Sin embargo, hay tres opciones, tres opciones, una es de construir trescientos sesenta asientos en ese lugar, esta opción... Hará que niñas no tenga que ser transportadas, opción dos, que será proveer a... Trescientos sesenta asientos en la parte este, en tres años, tendríamos que esperar... Que milcen años sean completados en seis años, para mí esto no es aceptable, yo no puedo continuar... A ubicar milcien estudiantes en otros sitios, pero este es a esta comunidad, esta escuela necesita, ahora estoy aquí para pedirles que... Apoyen opción uno, la cual no solamente proveerá los asientos para los alumnos, pero también proveerá necesidad para esta comunidad, para la comunidad de centro de Los Ángeles. Se abrirá también espacio de un parque y proveerá a esta comunidad... Espacio recreacional que es muy necesaria también proveer. Una clase, un aula sin paredes para la escuela anexa, esto... Sí, verá que también pido que apoyen a la escuela, al distrito escolar, esperamos que el Consejo Municipal nuevo mencione su apoyo para los niños de esta comunidad y terminar este... Asunto uno, pues nos encontramos con el concejal Reyes, estaba mencionando que hay varios offices elegidos que puedan opción uno, solo les pide padecer estudiantes de la comunidad, también incluye... Malde. Y otras organizaciones, espero que ustedes apoyen esta resolución, muchas gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Weisar, Stephanie Landrigan.
Good morning, council members, Mr. President.
Buenos días, concejales, señor presidente, yo soy la arquitecta principal, tengo el conserva... El conservamiento de la montaña de Santa Monica, que el plan que hemos propuesto, la cual consideramos, la cual consideramos la mejor opción, lo que esto incluye es una oportunidad para... Tomar la escuela de Belmont actual y agregar un elemento de educación que es único a la ciudad, esto será un laboratorio y unas aulas adicionales, lo que hemos hecho en nuestros parques. Construimos áreas de entrada del área urbana, el cual da una... Sentimiento como, es centrando un lugar muy sagrado, este lugar aquí... Ustedes vendían de la calle Colton, casi el punto más elevado de esta montaña, donde se ubican un parque, entrarán a un lugar, una área donde se mirará... El ladrillo de Belmont, el cual ha sido nombrado históricamente después. Pasado, el cual es... Este es el area de ellos para construir elementos de gran... Paso de entrada que será muy formal y después entrarán al elemento natural, muchas también de aquí que tenemos... Una imagen de... Elemento de agua, esto lo hemos utilizado, para el parque tendremos elementos de agua y retención de agua. Bajo un diseño sostenible y también planeamos hacer un... Lago con pescados. Eso no se ve muy seguido de Los Ángeles. Mi colega también les mostrará nuestras fotografías que le mostrará porque... Y la han nombrado vista hermosa, el cual es precisamente un nombre adecuado para este lugar, gracias. Es muy difícil creer esto, pero... Hard to believe, but this classroom without walls, which is actually... Parte de los catorce acres y es parte del lugar de Belmont, esto construido, incorporada. El campo de fútbol, no estamos quitando, excluyendo actividades dentro del programa, pero esto será una oportunidad increíble de multiuso, un parque y una escuela. Y pueden ver aquí, estamos mirando el centro del nivel elevado, donde estamos construyendo el lago con los pescados. Esta es una vista que hace una semana tomó esta fotografía y dibujamos este dibujo para darse una idea de cómo podrá verse en el futuro uno de estas partes del parque, también incluirá un pequeño teatro. Donde uno puede incluir temas como biología, química, pero también pueden leer lecturas de poetría. Y otros estudios académicos se pueden llevar en este teatro, afuera en el sur de California tenemos la potencia de tomar ventaja de... El tiempo, el ambiente que tenemos, hace yo cuando fui a la comunidad, a la reunión de la comunidad de semana pasada, conocimos cuántas... La gran pasión que sienten los niños de la comunidad sobre Belmont y ellos dando mi idea, este será un deseo mental donde podrían ir durante la semana, pero el fin de semana y por las tardes pueden... Me mostrar ventaja de este parque. Joe Edmiston from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy is parking and we were hoping he would arrive on time, but... Aún no llegado, pero el presupuesto para este parque... Será construido una... Diferentes proposiciones, por tanto, lo hacían a gustar de, por tanto, espero que vea que hay en este proyecto, el cual estamos haciendo una gran adición para la comunidad, para el centro de Los Ángeles, gracias.
Buenos días, el superintendente de... El superintendente sobre asunto, un poco de historia, era permitir cuando el superintendente tomó esta posición, Belmont estaba cerrado, no estaba, llevando a cabo ninguna construcción y... No estaba, cuando el... Supertentente tomó su posición dijo, yo estoy comprometido a esta comunidad y para mejorar esta necesidad y... Como resultado, renunció Belmont. Al modo de actuar si ustedes deciden construir o no construirlo, estamos teniendo un diálogo ahora de cómo construirlo, es un gran cambio político, es un cambio para la mejor, para mejorar esta comunidad. También es muy importante recordar que hay tres mil trescientos asientos para la escuela preparatoria, la construcción dentro de... Con media milla de Belmont. opción número dos por diferentes razones, pero nunca se opuso ninguna otra opción, simplemente sintió que por alguna razón esté la superficial, pues embargo muchas más personas se involucraron de los asientos de mil cien asientos, hemos crecido nuestra opción que nos proveerá estos asientos lo más posible, también queremos investigar el reuso de los edificios actuales, aunque tenemos que derrumbar dos donde están sobre el fallo de temblor, el superintendente también da la idea del parque, es una gran adición a este lugar y esto beneficiará muchísimo a la comunidad, estamos trabajando razonablemente para resolver los asuntos tocantes, solamente queda retirar el hecho que estamos trabajando para proveer, proveer la mejor alternativa y los dos mil seiscientos asientos lo más posible sin comprometer el ambiente académico y también estamos considerando cómo mejorar los edificios para uso académico.
Joe Edmiston. Joe Edmiston. Joe gobernó una vez, Joe gobernó dos veces, vamos a terminar con comentarios públicos en este momento. Ahora, el diablo. El consiguió municipal, señor Garcetti. Señor Garcetti.
Gracias, señor presidente. Gracias, señor presidente. Gracias, señor Reyes y señor Weisar por su liderazgo continuo sobre este asunto. Muchos de ustedes estarán en el distrito trece, ellos sé que muchos estudiantes irán ahí, ellos pertenecen a mi distrito, creo que es muy... Pienso en ver a personas que... Pienso en poner un árbol, lagos y también jardines, campo verde en este lugar muchas veces. Miramos en Los Ángeles con parques...
Que se ve mucho se clanta, ahí está, y es una gran posibilidad, yo apoyo para los que aún no están muy seguros en cuántas opciones, el documento se ha presentado varias veces mientras tenemos más asientos bajo construcción de áreas, pero si consideran la proyección del futuro, lo que podemos decir es de que menos niños serán transportados de esa área y sabiendo la cantidad de niños que se levanta, tienen que ser transportados a través de autobús fuera de su comunidad para su educación, me pregunto yo cuántos niños podemos, cuántos niños permitiremos que sean transportados fuera de escuela y es, la gente debe ser, como sociedad debemos de proveer una escuela y un parque para esos niños, para que sí caminen a esos lugares, son derechos básicos para niños, no tenemos que ser muy inteligentes para proveer esto, es que ha habido una historia con este lugar que hemos visto luz al fin de la tuna, pero también habrá espacio verde o jardines y también espacio educacional. Gracias por su apoyo, gracias, un recurso grande, el liderazgo, señor Weisar, gracias, alcalde, gracias por su apoyo, esto ha sido un grupo muy histórico, hemos tenido muchos obstáculos en el camino, pero es algo que en el futuro miraremos y seremos vivos por haber apoyado esto, gracias, señor joven. La razón por la cual esta escuela fue aprobada al principio fue por la contaminación en la tierra, ¿es así? Ya, ya mejoraron esto. Lo que tenemos es DTSC, el departamento de tasa que trata con tóxicos, ha estado trabajando con el superintendente Romer, ha hecho un gran trabajo agrupando a todos los expertos para resolver estos asuntos, tal como han resultado todos los años, y la pregunta es la contaminación de tierra, lo tóxico, como se identifica en esa área ya ha desaparecido, no ha desaparecido, pero tenemos sistema de mitigación que puede empezar, para eso lo que tenemos aquí, este señor para problemas de daños ambientales, él puede contestar. Buenos días, señor presidente. Es su director. Mi nombre es Dave Jensen, soy acting deputy director of the office of environmental health and safety. Y como mencionaba, el lugar ha sido considerado seriamente, los contaminantes que fueron identificados previamente, ya sabemos que está ahí, es una condición de diferentes químicas y básicamente a través de esta investigación hemos determinado cuál, qué cantidad es y dónde está ubicado y si podemos crear condiciones ambientales para mejorar todos, como conocemos sobre todas estas químicas, si estamos tratando soluciones para mejorar esto. Primero, la razón por la cual se ha construido es por la falla del, la falla que se encuentra bajo la escuela, opción es derrumbar los edificios que están sobre esa falla, esto mejora las curas en ese lugar. Nos han dado un plan para hacerse suponer los edificios, para hacerse esquenos, no hay peligro en cuanto al temblor y ya estamos en una buena posición ahora. Por ese lado podemos construir una escuela dentro de cincuenta pies de una falla activa, la falla tenemos aquí, no podemos decir si es activa o no, estamos en un, muy precavidos estamos construyendo dentro de cincuenta pies de esa falla, por lo tanto tenemos que derrumbar los edificios que actualmente están en esa falla, no tenemos esos edificios y derrumbaremos esos edificios. Yo voy a apoyar los señores, pero voy a decir algo que no se construirá una escuela ahí, si se construyen no se abrirá. Porque sí, quería una preparatoria ahí para... Tenía una escuela para niños, eso que nos hubieran hecho ya en el pasado, los montos que hicieron en los años previos, la primera razón es por la química, por la contaminación en la tierra, fueron al tribunal y todos ganaron dinero, los personas de los de avances ambientales también, los abogados fueron, el argumento era de que ya está bien y todo, ya está bien, no podemos hacerlo, podemos construir la escuela ahí, pero tenemos una falla de temblor activa bajo el edificio, esto ha sido también identificado, y si construimos una escuela en una área anexa, pues será bien siempre cuando sea cincuenta pies de la general de una falla de temblor activa, dime, ¿qué creerá cuando empiece a ver el temblor? El hecho de que sí, es verdad de Los Ángeles, como en todas otras partes hay muchas fallas de temblor activos, pero el hecho de que después serían los típicos señores que tenemos información, si no, por lo tanto no podemos construir esta escuela ya que la hemos construido, no la podremos abrir, eso es lo que me preocupa. Y también nos pasa mucho de que los niños necesitan una escuela en esa área, estamos construyendo rascacielos sobre fallas de temblor, en Los Ángeles no podemos huir de este hecho, tenemos que tener una solución estructuralmente fija, cincien, quince, veinte pies de la general de esta falla, a todos modos la fuerza del temblor lo tumbará, si esto explota en algún momento otro edificio, se derrumbará, porque no será, no, quizás fue diseñado adecuadamente, yo estoy aquí por último, ustedes ahí están tocantes esta escuela, solamente hay, habla, 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 quieren construir un lugar del hotel de estar envasado, escribe que en el distrito escolar está pasando una falla, otra falla. También hay química adicional en este lugar, señor Reyes, tenemos una escuela ahí tampoco, pero voy a apoyar esta noción. Gracias, señor Holden. Señor Labange, seguid por señor Burton y señor Reyes.
Gracias, señor vice. Señor Jack Weiss, ¿a qué preparatoria fue usted? Beverly High School, ¿en el campo del laboratorio Beverly Hills hay un...? Hay asiento en ese lugar, hay muchos retos ambientales en, en los centros de Los Ángeles. Debemos de unirnos para completar, en vez de luchar para no completar, pero eso es una gran idea, solo creo yo que debe de haber más campos para deportes, no puedo que solo les encuentre lugares en Alision Park, porque campos de deportes no se han construido para jóvenes donde puedan ir a jugar, yo amo la idea del ambiente natural, es un gran tema, pero nuestros campos de deportes para los equipos de niños y niñas donde puedan ir a jugar deben ser incluidos en este proyecto y sinceramente yo creo que debemos terminar el proyecto de la preparatoria de Belmonte, yo mencioné esto porque hay fallas de temblor en otras partes y si escuchamos a los expertos en temblor, si hemos escuchado, pues pretendemos la culpa por no proceder, proveer el espacio académico para la preparatoria de Belmonte, yo recuerdo la preparatoria de Belmonte previa, tuve mi segundo mejor juego en Belmonte, mi primer link en premio, pongo el pie para felicitar a los que están presentes en este proyecto, lo mismo es de la junta directiva de la escolar, hay que unirnos para hacer algo y resolver algo porque estamos fallando las personas cuando no hacemos algo unidos, pero ahora parar y no proceder será un gran error, esto fijará el tono que, y personas tendrán una visión en el futuro y creo yo que esto mejorarán la parte oeste de Boltry, preguntarle si nos sería haber más campos de deportivos porque no hay suficientes canchas de fútbol ni para beisbol y creo que los niños de esta área tengan un campo para beisbol, tal como está en todo lo que le ponen el instituto, por lo tanto quiero mencionar esto para ese consejón aquí, en Alision, en el centro, que también voy a tratar de construir las clases, las salas para la preparatoria de Belmonte y terminar diciendo como graduado de la preparatoria de Marshall, me pongo el pie para apoyar a la preparatoria de Belmonte, que es un rival en nuestra preparatoria, pero lo apoyaré, gracias, señor Burton.
No hay duda de que hay una necesidad para estos niños por la escuela del centro de Los Ángeles, ya hay tiempo, se han hecho muchos errores, pero tenemos que proceder. Creo yo que es la posición de la coracción ríos, hay ciertas dudas, obviamente tenemos fallas de temblores en esta ciudad, abajo del este, del ayuntamiento aquí, y hace poco han dicho que quizás puede ocurrir un temblor de siete puntos cien, con eso nos persigue que debemos dejar de vivir, aparentemente cada doscientos o trescientos años ocurre un temblor, también no sabemos cuándo ocurre, no tenemos el problema, pero edificios pueden construir en el día de hoy, las normas que podrán sobrevivir un temblor, por ejemplo cuando se construyeron, el ayuntamiento lo sea, hicieron una base, una fundación que aparentemente nos protegerá, protegerá supuestamente de un temblor en el futuro, por lo tanto yo apoyaré esta misión y les quiero pedir que el distrito escolar de Los Ángeles sean precavidos para desarrollar los planes de genería para esta escuela, para asegurar que les van a estar lo más seguro posible bajo las condiciones actuales, gracias, señor Reyes.
Gracias, señor presidente, colegas, y veo que tenemos a nuestro... Señor Joe Edmiston ha llegado, señor presidente, en esta cuestión. Solo quiero reconocer el trabajo de el concejal Reyes y cada vez que viajo por la autopista uno diez, veo este campo, va cambiando. Y yo apoyo su misión, pero mejorar la comunidad y mejorar la educación para los estudiantes, así que tengo mi voto, espero que esto termine, hará positivo. Tenemos anexo a la autopista uno diez, gracias, señor Reyes. Colegas, muchas gracias por su apoyo. Quiero darle lo que es el superintendente Romer y a su personal, han sido muy proactivos y trabajando en joint ventures, mixtos, shared views, trabajando en órdenes, no solo a nivel municipal, estatal. Les doy las gracias a ellos por su trabajo tan dirigente, pero de nuevo tenemos ahora una oportunidad para mejorar esto, ya no jugar con las vidas de nuestros niños, hay que enviar un mensaje bastante fuerte y esperamos que la junta directiva escolar se una con el espíritu de, para las generaciones futuras como una ciudad y considera una noción de que lo que es mejor para un niño en una parte de la ciudad debe ser igualmente bueno para otro niño en otra parte de la ciudad, muchas gracias por su apoyo.
No podría resistir la oportunidad de hacer lo que ustedes hacen, hablar sobre alguien por quien yo trabajaba, quiere decir, primeramente creo que esta es una gran solución a este problema, yo haré lo que ustedes quieren para apoyar, yo trabajaba como asesora para Joe Edmiston y una cosa que estuvimos haciendo, entonces obviamente han continuado haciéndolo, es encontrar maneras para multiuso, sí que esto es una función, no sé cuánto recuerdan que el museo Geri... Se construyó otra vez diferentes compromisos y negociaciones con UCLA y el grupo de, para conservar las montañas, pero lo que es muy atractivo sobre esto es los tipos de experiencia que el grupo de conservatorio puede traer a la, al diálogo de, para uso múltiple es algo sumamente importante y nos estamos, situaciones, yo solamente quería mencionar que yo trabajaba por este, muchas gracias, señor Galantero, muchas gracias por esta presentación sobre este asunto, ¿no? Actuario, abre ese voto, cierra ese voto, ¿hay tabulete con teo? ¿Quince? Sí, ha sido aprobado. Asunto cinco, desea aplazar este asunto por una semana, solamente de mayo. Pide siempre aplazar asuntos cinco sin protestas y llevar a cabo, procedamos. Asunto número diez, catorce especial por el concejal Parks. Señor Parks, asunto diez. Gracias, señor presidente, primero, me gustaría... A este reporte creo yo que aclarará varios puntos tocantes los asuntos del estadio, que esta propuesta no aumentará impuestos actuales, creerá impuestos adicionales y pondrá tampoco a la cuenta del fondo general en riesgo, es importante mientras consideramos las dinámicas y cómo estas se relacionan a pro fútbol en Los Ángeles, en esta región debemos presentar una moción para activar o llevar a cabo una audiencia por el comité temporal del estadio durante este reunión del comité, varias personas dieron testimonio en cuanto a los beneficios económicos para la ciudad de Los Ángeles, la región original en cuanto a desarrollo económico, pero más importante también está hablando acerca del desarrollo del coliseo, la elección, selección del coliseo como lugar ideal y después de considerar toda la ciudad de Los Ángeles y en áreas con desarrollo económico, Coliseum decidió que Coliseum tiene las más ventajas para la ciudad, no solamente en cuanto al tiempo para que este sea reparado y actualizado y mejorado, pero considerando el menos impacto en las áreas alrededores, en particular reconociendo los varios millones de dólares que han sido ya gastados en el coliseo, parte del parque exposición, ya con este reporte extenso y también con la información, además, que hace falta policía, hay también información que el presidente del comité de deportes y comercios es sumamente claro que mientras procedemos, escuchamos y consideramos los reportes sobre la posibilidad de tener un fútbol en la parte oeste, la ciudad de Los Ángeles perderá, si no, posicionamos una propuesta que al menos el consiguió municipal puede apoyar, después puede ser utilizado para la comisión de coliseo, esperando que estos tres niveles de gobierno pueden llegar a una solución para así poder al menos iniciar esta plática y tener un equipo de fútbol como, dialogamos en el comité, es que no vamos a poder tener un diálogo de fútbol si no tenemos una posición de apoyo de el partido municipal. de el partido municipal y también del comité, por tanto con este cambio que te me ofrece en cuanto a los impuestos que siempre es una preocupación de parte muchos, del público y de miembros de este gobierno municipal, espero apoyar el reporte del comité, eso es una adhesión por el presidente, la concejal también, el grupo de propuestas, ha sido activado para que sí ellos puedan repasar cualquier propuesta que se presentara en sociedad y así de un reporte regresó al consejo municipal cuando será la habilidad de mantenernos al tanto de todas las negociaciones mientras procedemos, por tanto yo recomendar un voto sí sobre esta propuesta para así tener la habilidad de proceder con esto hacia la comisión del coliseo y así informar a la oposición de el consejo municipal.
Señor presidente, yo sé que muchos de ustedes tienen, han tomado un interés en fútbol, estadios de fútbol y hemos fijado un límite que en Ciudad de Los Ángeles que no vamos a pagar para que el NFL venga a Los Ángeles que yo retiraré este punto, ves tras veces que la Ciudad de Los Ángeles no va a utilizar fondos de los que pagan impuestos y así darlos al NFL para traer una franquicia y así darle algún motivo porque si las que nos consideramos, fútbol yo he sido un gran activista de un lugar en la parte este de Los Ángeles cerca de centro de Los Ángeles, lo que quiero hacer, es que el comité no pudo mirar esto. Yo tengo un estadio, anexo al río, teniendo una situación similar tal como lo tiene en el tazón de rosas, tenemos un parque completo, anexo al río y habrá un estadio, estará dentro muy cercano al MTA, estación de transportación, hay una manera para que este sea adecuado para peatones, del MTA al estadio y esto presentará varias ideas, ideas uno, un nuevo estadio de fútbol, un estadio al lado del río, construir cerca, alrededor del río, un parque y también podemos incluir, ir más allá, tenemos la exposición política de un retamiento de agua, del MTL, hay muchas posibilidades aquí, esto está dentro del proyecto, desarrollo de adelante, tiene un impacte con, un impacto mínimo en cuanto a asuntos de policías, pronto que pongan de pie parte de mi distrito, el río, parte estoy respeto al reporte del comité pero el motivo que decir es que también hay otras opciones que quizás el NFL pueda considerar, por tanto quería presentar esto para su consideración, gracias señor vice, gracias señor presidente, yo quiero reconocer los esfuerzos extraordinarios en este poco tiempo que señor Parks estaba en el consejo municipal trabajando con este asunto, usted tiene una gran posición que lograr en cuanto al asunto de fútbol, son cuatro, sí, los zapatos señor Labange, sí también, los zapatos señor Ridley Thomas también, no voy a hablar más sobre eso pero... Yo soy muy fanático, de forma de apoyo en la idea de tener un fútbol en Ciudad de Los Ángeles, yo apoyo esta forma, yo voté en contra de crear el comité temporario, a sobre de meses siempre tuviste esas maneras de negociar con 37 algo de hombres que son billonarios, los dueños de los grupos de NFL, porque, y una mujer, sí, 36 ya no hombres y una mujer, pero yo usamos estado, veces ves que su forma es de... Engañar a ciudad de, sí, no creo que la Ciudad de Los Ángeles sea la siguiente víctima, el NFL necesita a los Ángeles, porque los Ángeles necesitan NFL, mientras así entiendo el concepto de tomar posesión, extensión, a mi punto de vista la responsabilidad debe ser en NFL, demostrarle a Ciudad de Los Ángeles porque es nuestra ventaja de incluirnos en esos diálogos, hasta entonces está que me demuestran esto, creo yo que enviamos la estrategia, la señal estratégica equivocada, estar tan animados de llegar a alguna trato con NFL porque todas las pruebas que he visto en cuanto como han tratado con otras ciudades y como han tratado, negociar con otras ciudades me hace sentir muy dudoso tomar esta estrategia y digo esto siendo un gran fanático de fútbol. Señor presidente, yo obviamente apoyo que fútbol sea reubicado en Ciudad de Los Ángeles y sea de manera adecuada y obviamente el coliseo el cual ya está en lugar, ha sido una institución de esta ciudad por muchísimo tiempo desde que yo era niño, eso es un lugar obvio, lo principal es como lo dijo señor Vice, es de que no se llevará a cabo pensamientos justos o iguales de parte de los propietarios para pagar o patrocinar equipos, eso es un operación multimillonaria, los dueños son multimillonarios que ganan muchísimos lucros por regalías de televisión, otros creo yo que esto es la área principal deportiva en Ciudad de Los Ángeles, necesitan estar, pero yo apoyaré esto particularmente con su cambio señor Parks, que sea claro que no se utilizará dinero de fondos públicos para traer a ese equipo a Ciudad de Los Ángeles, señora Calanter. Me parece que yo no soy fanático de fútbol aunque yo he disfrutado de esas cosas pero creo yo que vale la pena y vale mucho personal menos iniciar diálogos con ellos, yo quiero cuidar esta misión, ustedes dicen que me hecho aprecio, en lugar del coliseo creo que lo más importante es de considerar, tener un equipo, una lucha para Ciudad de Los Ángeles, yo no quiero excluir la propuesta, Pacheco tampoco, yo recuerdo cuando los Lakers iban a ir del Forum, de un labor y estamos dialogando sobre este asunto para ubicarlos a la arena de este post, entonces sabíamos, ya no dijimos suficiente sobre esto que vale la pena tener los ingresos que vienen cuando un equipo que venga a Ciudad de Los Ángeles, no a la localidad cercana pero para nuestra ciudad, para así recibir los impuestos de hoteles y también de ventas, parece que debemos estar en diálogo, no, estamos que no les vamos a dar, no podemos estar en una posición para describir las ventajas a ellos de estar en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, porque parte de su estrategia de negociación es de pretender que no hay ventajas, nosotros sabemos y ellos saben que hay ventajas para por estar aquí, pero quiero cuidar esta misión pero espero muchas estoy, ya que leyendo la información en la agenda, consideren presentarlo, entre de la necesidad de lo que costaría para traer un equipo, la ciudad, y si no vienen, si no se les otorga dinero público, entonces no venden, esto puede ser argumentado cuando sea presentado, creo que nosotros hacemos los resultados de esto pero al menos hay que ver que lo que podemos, a dónde podemos llegar, hay esa profundidad, consideremos un lugar de nacional pero no un otro lugar nacional, aún queremos regresar y dialogar sobre esto, no sé exactamente cómo esto puede ser modificado pero si es entendido porque específicamente se nos acerca de traer un equipo al coliseo, yo estoy, necesito como decir que eso es su primer objetivo pero podemos cambiar esto de alguna manera para que incluya y que traer un equipo para la ciudad de Ciudad de Los Ángeles con el patés en el coliseo, la razón por la cual hicimos es, escribimos esta manera, es porque es R.A. y su reporte miró nueve áreas de desarrollo, ellos concluyeron con tres donde empezaron a crear una masa de cuadros y después esos tres escogieron uno, no, estamos considerando áreas donde pensamos que iba a traer el beneficio más grande económico, la ciudad del área donde que presentó señor Pacheco fue parte de esta evaluación y fue considerado que iba a costar más y vamos a quitar a más negocios para poder construir más, para tener más terreno para que íbamos, iba a tomar más estacionamientos, parece que esto no, claro, no estoy argumentando eso, no estoy oponiendo eso pero creo yo que si nos sentamos en la mesa con ellos y si esto lo que hemos considerado, que empezó a ser por Frank, me dice ellos, viene con ustedes, no creo que esto, creo que es la manera que podemos hacer que esto ocurra aquí bajo tus condiciones, allá bajo sus condiciones, no creo yo que queremos despedir esto, en mi otra mitad queremos tener otro diálogo sobre esto. Lo que yo he entendido es que si enviamos a un negocio para hablar con ellos y no tenemos al menos nuestros propios entendimientos de lo que pensamos que la ciudad producirá, entonces ellos no hablará con nosotros y continuarán considerando una área fuera de la ciudad, claro, yo no quiero interferir con este proceso, solamente quiero dejar suficiente flexibilidad y espacio para decirnos gustan coliseo, por eso iremos a otra parte, eso es todo, creo yo que es la flexibilidad, las personas del coliseo, personas han tenido diálogos que no vendrán aquí, han tenido, yo simplemente que sí, tendrían, pero creo que este asunto de simplificar estas oportunidades porque sin estas oportunidades el NFL tiene una historia de causar ciudades y comunidades que compitan en contra de los otros y esto aumentará el costo, el precio del equipo, es por eso que estamos tratando de buscar una simplificación para este proceso, gracias señor presidente, San Diego tiene un equipo de fútbol, o Calintero tiene un equipo de fútbol, en San Francisco, y nosotros no, y queremos tener uno, apoyo, la propuesta de traer el NFL de regreso a Ciudad de Los Ángeles que el concejal Juan ha trabajado también con el previo concejal, Ridley Thomas tiene parques, una mejoramiento económico, puede ser Ciudad de Los Ángeles, estaremos en el marco de nuevo, se inició aquí el Super Bowl y otras actividades extraordinarias, dos olímpicas, olimpiadas, dos olimpiadas en el coliseo, sé que personas están cerca de mí, cerca de crear, construir un estadio, el Vaisa Fernando, no creo que el Vaisa Fernando esté listo para este coliseo pero, con mi opinión se han acercado a mi presión, yo sé que la tazón de rosas quería traer el equipo del NFL, está ayudando a Pasadena y quiere reducir el tamaño del estadio, el cual esperando apoyo de la comunidad, el cual es decir al tránsito, por lo tanto yo apoyo, proceder, sobre eso lo único que me preocupa es acerca del estado económico, quiero que aseguremos, y protegemos la cuenta de fondo general, asegurad que tendremos los billonarios, los dueños de fútbol que utilicen sus dólares ya que recibirán los beneficios extraordinarios como resultado, pero es una idea, que si no hacemos algo estaremos en un lugar que será excluido y soccer será muy, muy, muy mucho, que tanto de casa acabamos de traer un estadio de soccer mientras vemos que más jóvenes están interesándose en soccer, fútbol será opción secundaria mientras tenemos a los Lakers, a los Clippers, a los Kings, otras actividades y un nuevo salón de concierto de Disney, hemos revitalizado la ciudad y me parece que si no hacemos algo, nos, ahora entenderemos, lo que quiero, seguras, que protegemos esa dos cantidad de fondos que hay, les apoyo yo al señor Parks, que si debemos de enviar a personas durante esta división, debemos, porque yo que pasa que no logra presentarle dos personas en la misma mesa para mejorar la región del sur de California, gracias señor Hahn. Gracias señor presidente, colegas, yo pongo de pie para apoyar lo que está pendiente ahora, quiero decir, los actas, a mí me encanta el coliseo siempre, siempre, en general el coliseo tengo las mejores memorias, entonces yo que sí vivía en Crenshaw, mi papá llevaba flores a Hoover, manejábamos del chico al coliseo y íbamos a muchos juegos ahí, antes de que los Rams se fueron fui a los juegos de Raiders, yo sí me decepcioné cuando hablábamos acerca de que era la franquicia aquí, y el coliseo no estaba, la negociación ya lo habíamos excluido, ya que decíamos que ya estaba viejo y no estaba el coliseo, que estaba buscando, estaba buscando un estadio lujoso y no había estado en el corazón, donde el corazón que es considerar Ciudad de Los Ángeles, en relación al NFL quizá necesita a Ciudad de Los Ángeles y quizás es una de soluciones que Ciudad de Los Ángeles no tenga en un juego y me gusta a mí el hecho que decir sí, mucho gusto hablamos con ustedes pero pensamos que el coliseo es el lugar más adecuado, para considerar es el lugar más económico, es más bajo costo ese estadio, que podremos renovar, yo sé que hay planes en todos partidos de la ciudad para mejorar el coliseo, maneras de que este sea más atractivo, pero yo que todo está en la exposición Park, el museo, es un lugar perfecto para atraer familias, mamás, papás, hijos, todo es para toda esta estructura, si no obviamente es mirar el juego, pero me da mucho gusto, quizás era la verdad que el coliseo es un lugar que si sí tenemos un equipo es el lugar donde hacer lo que hay que hacer en la ciudad que está mostrando, y nos está dando mucho dinero, mejorando su área muy, muy lindo y creo yo que no habrá nada más lindo que ir a un juego de fútbol en el coliseo al cual naturalmente, donde ya sí van a cabo las olimpiadas, es un gran tesoro en esta ciudad que estamos haciendo, más estudiando, perteneciendo a nuestros tesoros para crear áreas históricas, o sea creo que estamos cambiando en cuanto a, que se va a estar, es que tiene historia Ciudad de Los Ángeles, yo apoyo eso pero también apoyo a asegurar que protejamos el publico de fondo general, a utilizar, tienen los públicos para lograr estos, estos dueños, billonarios, el dinero que necesitan para ayudar, financiar, esto creo que esto es la manera correcta. Gracias, señor presidente, creo que en poco tiempo usted nos ha puesto en el mapa, en un momento donde parece que está creciendo rápidamente, creo que es muy importante que Ciudad de Los Ángeles sea lo mismo. Mañana el mensaje de que pasa tienes, de que Ciudad de Los Ángeles estamos unidos. Mientras consideramos, lo hacemos, es nuestra primera y mejor opción de esta ciudad, una norma histórica para espacios, ver, decimos, miramos maneras de construcción que incluye 20 o 30 maneras de todo la basura en este país, construir un nuevo coliseo, tiene asuntos de activos nosotros creemos o no, tenerlo, tenemos de reciclarlo, reutilizarlo y mejorarlo, siempre pensamos que es mejor construir una nueva edificio historia, esto decir que tenemos un compromiso tal como tenemos nuestros edificios municipales, de retar y utilizar las técnicas de construcción más sensibles para el ambiente, creo que el sub contenido para el NFL, esto ha sido dicho público por muchos los propietarios, ellos no han hablado sobre el coliseo, creo yo que depende pasar más tiempo en la comunidad, que el concejal les dé una excursión que se informe acerca de esta vecindad porque es vibrante, hay una razón por la cual dicen que el coliseo no va a ser incluido, no tiene que visualmente ponerle un por el, si tiene que ver con la percepción de sur central o lo que es su Ciudad de Los Ángeles, eso debe ser dicho muy claramente, tenemos que retar estos propietarios muchos quienes, sus equipos consisten de muchos diferentes colores tal como los colores de la comunidad, ellos deben de tomar parte en esta área tal como los, mi comunidad también, cuando ellos vienen a esta área creo yo que ellos darán cuenta que el coliseo, considerando que el coliseo es lo mejor y será muy... Consejal Parks, ya se ha llevado este punto de votación, claro, yo creo que es muy lindo, yo entero lo que dijo señor Hahn, el coliseo en el estadio es una gran campaña, nuestra primera obligación es a la ciudad del sur de California y a sus vecinos. nuestra primera obligación es al anochecer de los de California y a sus vecinos para asegurar que ellos son como otros que usan este lugar. Es muy importante, y mejor esto, pero mientras confiamos en el NFL es muy importante que ellos sepan los sentimientos de la ciudad, los sentimientos son que esto es el lugar donde jugar, entre no, y figurar con la gran historia y este gran estadio no, en grados, enmemorar los veteranos, el colegio de Los Ángeles cuando ustedes pasan a través de este túnel, no de muchos, no de muchos, hasta el mundo, han pasado por este túnel y ha competido en este campo ahí donde debe jugar, es donde ya ha fallecido John Farrelly, todos los demás que han jugado en este lugar, en lo que decir, ahora miembros, la liga de fútbol nacional, Jack. El NFL es una organización de treinta y dos propietarios, ellos van a escoger ellos, pero mi opinión, y si ocurre esto no que ellos escogen, que se ha mejorado, pero no quiero que ellos estén en algo de otra ciudad y hagan que nos sientan con tus sentimientos, cuando quitaron los Rams, que fueron hasta Oakland. Cuando Marcus Allen jugó, y tenían grandes equipos, Jim Punkt and Mike Haynes, todos esos personas quienes ganaron el campeonato mundial en 1983, 84, un gran tiempo, pero esto es muy importante para mandar, enviar un mensaje para la comisión del colegio, recibir este mensaje de, de motorizar los fondos generales de impuestos, el colegio tiene impuestos del condado, tiene ingreso del condado, del estado, aunque me se lo creo, por tanto quiero ponerme de pie para apoyar este esfuerzo, gracias señor Parks, por lo que hace el enfoque del colegio, porque esto es un gran estado y es donde debe de verse, acabó este juego, porque no hay nada más emocionante, miembros. Que ir al juego, a las diez de la mañana, cuando no había nada ahí, solamente los pajaritos, después los fanáticos llegaban, llenaban los asientos de ambiente, los pajaritos volaban a ese estado y después se iban, mientras los fanáticos llegaban a los escenarios, llegaban al campo y miraban esos grandes juegos, sí, después, mientras todos los fanáticos se iban, los pajaritos regresaban para recoger los cacahuetes que se dejaban en el estadio, muy, muy, mucha majestad y cuando se prendía la torcha en el colegio, no sabía que no estaba en uno de los mejores, sino el mejor lugar en el mundo, el colegio. Gracias señor presidente, gracias, buen trabajo.
Señor presidente, ¿señores de Los Ángeles, una ciudad de clase mundial? Creo que no. Ni siquiera piensan como una ciudad de clase mundial, y eso es muy desafortunado. Cada ciudad mayor en Estados Unidos que conocemos, y más pequeñas también, tienen una equipo de fútbol y una equipo de baloncesto, y deportes, y desarrollo económico, todo funciona juntos para bien. Señor presidente, ¿señores, que hubo un tiempo en el que no teníamos el centro Staples y puedo entender los problemas asociados con eso? Pero la ciudad de Los Ángeles apoyó ese proyecto al firmar una medida de acuerdo que valía más de setenta millones de dólares, de lo contrario el proyecto no podría haber sido desarrollado. Y todos los desarrolladores tuvieron que hacer fue enviar una carta de crédito garantizando que la medida de acuerdo pagaría. Y luego este consejo, hace poco, rescindió el requisito de que haya incluso una carta de crédito, por lo que la ciudad está en línea, que pagaría setenta millones de dólares más si algo sucediera. Y luego están aquí hoy y dicen que no usarán ningún dinero de los contribuyentes para traer una equipo de fútbol. Entonces, no entiendo qué tipo de idioma hablan en un tiempo diferente. Sin embargo, diría que hay un número de equipos que le encantaría venir a Los Ángeles. Teníamos tres equipos de fútbol, San Diego Chargers también jugó aquí, los Rams que ya mencioné jugaría, y los Raiders en el Coliseum. No hay otra instalación en Estados Unidos que el Coliseum. Teníamos un terremoto allí y teníamos un programa de retrofitación financiado por FEMA, gastó más de cien y treinta mil millones de dólares. Ese dinero fue gastado para hacer que el Coliseum se firmara estructuralmente, incorporado a una fecha posterior, boxes de lujo. Estuve allí cuando sucedió. El hecho es que es estructuralmente firmado. El comité adhósico miró varios sitios y finalizó en uno, el Coliseum, dada la realidad de que estás diciendo que no vamos a gastar ningún dinero de los contribuyentes. Si vas a tiempo, eso es lo que tienes que hacer. Podemos trabajar el mismo tipo de arreglo, el estado, el condado y la ciudad con un acuerdo de poder que tenemos en place. Podemos trabajar un acuerdo en el que podemos fluir la factura juntos para entusiasmar al equipo de venir aquí con su equipo pagando su parte suficiente y la renta se pagará por pagar el costo de la factura. Señor presidente, ¿señores, muchos de ustedes ni siquiera han ido al Coliseum? Este es un modelo de ello. No hay otra instalación en ningún lugar. El más grande público de cualquier equipo de fútbol en ningún lugar, USC cuando golpearon Notre Dame, está justo allí, en el Coliseum. Un estadio hermoso. No hay nada como él, sentado en el aire abierto, viendo una gran equipo de fútbol jugar en el Coliseum. Teníamos dos Olimpícolas, sé y voy a sentarme después de esto, señor presidente, ¿señores? Había un individuo que fue honrado en el Coliseum, sentado en la comisión, su nombre es Kenny Hahn. Kenny Hahn en 1935, solo para entrar al Coliseum, escaló la pared. Por supuesto, saben, captaron niños, eran un poco aprehendidos, tuvo que vivir eso durante el resto de su vida, pero disfrutó estar en el Coliseum. Esto es lo que son, mis amigos, es el único lugar en la ciudad de Los Ángeles donde no tenemos que poner nuestro dinero en frente, es nuestro dinero, que es el dinero de los contribuyentes, para tener una equipo de fútbol. Creo que puede suceder. Señor Parks, estás en el camino correcto, estás más allá del límite de cincuenta yard, la meta está a mano, están muy cerca.
Señor Holden, señor Holden, usted no tiene un débito de una hora, la próxima vez.
Oh, entonces lo mantendrá para la próxima vez.
¿Hacemos eso aquí en el consejo municipal? Lo hacemos ahora.
Simplemente quiero levantarme y reconocer el liderazgo de el consejo municipal Parks en este asunto.
Yo me gustaría ponerme de pie y conocer el liderazgo del señor Parks, por tomar esta prioridad sobre este asunto, es un momento, yo sé que el señor Parks y otros examen la importancia de que esto es un proyecto de desarrollo que cuando se mete el impacto que tendrá sobre esta comunidad, pero sobre la región. Creo yo que adecuadamente el reporte menciona la importancia de estar... Precisamente durante estos diálogos, es muy para tener un equipo de fútbol aquí nos hace, nos hace, nos hace momentos, recordarnos que no queremos gastar dinero público, pero como señora Hahn, esto es un tesoro, yo estaba yo no desde que era pequeña, yo también fui a las olímpadas en 1984, muchos de sus hijos no han ido, muchos niños no han ido al colegio. A un juego de baloncesto o un partido de soccer, pero no realmente un partido de fútbol desde que los Raiders estuvieron aquí. Estoy en apoyo al señor Parks hoy y su declaración, para continuar este diálogo y así continuar con esto, para poder tener la oportunidad de ser, de competir contra otras sociedades, unas ciudades que están luchando por este lugar, para tener un equipo de NFL, por lo tanto, me quise poner de pie para conocer este liderazgo. De parte señor, gracias señor presidente, me gustaría decir que, señor Holden hablaba acerca de... De abrir las puertas, yo tenía quince años de edad cuando me di cuenta que se vendían boletos para ir a esos juegos. Creo yo que yo puedo básicamente demostrar, tampoco lo echaremos con esos toques, te a temorar, a esperar, cuando ellos decidan que es el mejor lugar, creo yo que, de hecho que son bien raros, ellos van a ganar dinero, sin importar si estén Los Ángeles o no por Los Ángeles, y si ellos obtienen eso por Los Ángeles perderemos, lo único que tenemos que considerar es mirar el fiasco de la Sports Arena con los Lakers, nos hubiera gustado tener estos impuestos, por treinta años que se le entregó a Engles, después cuando miramos el Sports Arena, ahora no hay flujo de impuestos para mantener esto como un lugar productivo, creo yo que esto solo podemos considerar para el colegio, si no, traemos a un equipo ahí, el flujo de ingresos y disminuirá de tres días y si tenemos situación donde daños son significantes, no se puede reparar eso, pero eso también es muy importante considerar al tratar con estos que gastamos multimillonares dólares en la exposición Parkia, estamos construyendo dos mil estacionamientos que serán parte de la eficiencia del NFL, hemos sido más de siete millones de personas venir al centro de Ciencia desde su apertura, esto va a ser un gran punto de destilación para el ciudad de Los Ángeles, y hemos más de sesenta mil personas hasta fin de semana para la marcha de repasos en el colegio, que menos actualmente las personas no miran, que es un factor de seguridad como muchas personas lo han empezado en el pasado, pero cuando pensamos acerca de los económicos, la economía con estación, las tasones, las tasones de super, de fútbol, se ingresan como tres o cuatro millones en los últimos años, se ha logrado cincuenta millones de dólares. Trata a muchísimas personas, esta es un gran beneficio económico para la ciudad, para construir este estadio, pero el asunto principal de considerar Figueroa, King Boulevard, Exposición Boulevard, esto está siendo desarrollado para apoyar trabajos, comercios para este negocio, esto traerá ingresos accionales a la ciudad, precisamente con la... Ya de tener una transportepublica en esta área, esto tiene la habilidad, sí, de llevarlos, que en el sector se compran casas, compran la escuela, más si usa la escuela continuada, creciendo y traer un beneficio de impuestos que es beneficiario a la ciudad y también agregar un enganche le doy, quiero pedir, vota, que voten, para este reporte del comité, y siempre os digo gracias, nadie más dice esta presentación.
Vamos a ver, madame Cloak, abre el rollo, cerrar el rollo y tabular el voto.
Cuatorce, uno cero.
Está aprobado. El siguiente, por favor.
Item número catorce, llamada especial por el consejo municipal Holden.
Avanzando al item catorce, señor Reyes.
Colegas, en el item treinta y dos tenemos a muchos individuos de la comunidad, del consejo, de varias agencias, que han estado esperando pacientemente y me gustaría preguntar si podemos subir el item treinta y dos para que podamos aceptar su testimonio y tenemos un gran número de personas que quieren ser presentes, por lo tanto, apreciaré sinceramente quiero hacer una moción para hablar sobre este asunto primero.
Señores, tenemos una solicitud de retirar este asunto. ¿Hay una objeción?
Para hablar sobre el asunto treinta y dos primero, sin protesta.
Vamos a proceder luego al item treinta y dos, tenemos tarjetas de oración en este asunto.
El treinta y dos.
Presentación primero, tarjetas de oración, señor Reyes.
Este es un testimonio público, entonces puedo hablar.
El consejo llama a este momento al señor Ken Bernstein, seguido por Edman Suhu, Don Toy, Christine Peters y otros presentadores. Señor Bernstein.
Señor presidente, tenemos la cuarta tarjeta número diez.
Número diez, vamos a enviarlos así se abra.
Buen día señor presidente, consejos, miembros del consejo, Ken Bernstein con la Conservancia de Los Ángeles. Estamos aquí esta mañana para apoyar fuertemente al consejo municipal Reyes y su declaración y lo agradecemos por su liderazgo en este importante asunto. Esta moción derivó de una desmoronada de una casa en 1887 en la calle César Chavez Boulevard por la empresa G.H. Palmer. Esta es tal vez la última casa de su tipo en el centro de Los Ángeles, un marcador permanente del siglo XIX, y fue una desmoronada que ocurrió sin permiso en absoluto. Le habían dicho, el desarrollador le había dicho que la casa no podía ser desmoronada sin revisión ambiental y se fue adelante y la hizo de alguna manera el sábado por la mañana. Cualquiera que sea un dueño de la casa en esta ciudad sabe que la desmoronada no puede ocurrir sin permiso de desmoronamiento, mucho menos de una casa del siglo XIX aquí en Los Ángeles. Y las explicaciones a la prensa después por G.H. Palmer fueron que ocurrió un accidente o otro informe de prensa indicó que pensaban que la casa había comenzado a inclinarse de repente hacia el oeste y luego tenía que ser nivelado. Y estas son explicaciones tan ridículas como casi cómicas si no eran en realidad tan trágicas y tristes. Lo que es particularmente trágico aquí es que la solución de preservación fue en realidad dentro de alcance, solo dos días antes de la desmoronada. Habíamos reunido con el oficina del consejo municipal Reyes y muchos departamentos de la ciudad para reubicar la casa en uno de nuestros distritos históricos, el distrito de Angelino Heights, y eso estaba dentro de alcance y el desarrollador estaba consciente de ese progreso. Así que en light de esta ingenuidad, apoyamos fuertemente la moción del consejo municipal Reyes para invocar la llamada ordenanza de la tierra arruinada para impedir la construcción de esta propiedad por un periodo de cinco años. Esta fue una ordenanza que fue pasada específicamente para situaciones como esta, así como para iniciar la punición criminal. Si esta desmoronada no resulta en verdaderamente una punición significativa y repercusiones significativas, entonces realmente todos nuestros edificios históricos en esta ciudad están en riesgo. Así que el consejo y la familia de la ciudad necesitan enviar un mensaje fuerte de que esto no podrá ser tolerado. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Edman Suhu, seguido por Don Toy y Christine Peters, si puedo pedirte que se avancen y por favor se alineen detrás del podium.
Consejo presidente Padilla, buenas tardes y miembros del consejo municipal. Mi nombre es Edman Suhu, soy miembro del consejo cultural y histórico, así como residente de la comunidad donde se ubicó la casa de Ghee, y estoy aquí hoy para apoyar y aplaudir la propuesta del consejo municipal Reyes para que los desarrolladores se responsabilicen de sus acciones en nuestras comunidades. Nuestras comunidades son de familias trabajadoras que no necesariamente entienden o conocen el proceso de ciudad y desarrollo, pero ciertamente nuestros desarrolladores son bienvenidos para venir y trabajar con nuestras comunidades para mejorar y hacer nuestras vidas en la comunidad mejores. Sin embargo, los desarrolladores y los desarrolladores deben ser responsables de sus acciones y cuando hacen un error, ya sea accidental o solo un error, deben ser responsables, igual que cualquiera más, incluyéndome también como ciudadano. Soy responsable cuando hago errores o rompo la ley. Ellos como desarrolladores, con sus recursos y su personalidad, deben ser responsables también, y le damos la bienvenida a su desarrollo, pero deben ser responsables y le pido que le den su apoyo a la propuesta del consejo municipal Reyes para que los desarrolladores se responsables de sus acciones. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Don Toy, seguido por Christine Peters, Isa Kate Meckson y Kelly Suhu.
Consejo presidente Padilla, miembros del consejo, estoy aquí hoy en apoyo a la moción del consejo municipal Reyes, como otros oradores han indicado. He estado en Chinatown toda mi vida, residente lifelong, también soy el presidente del Comité de Asesoramiento de la Comunidad de la red de desarrollo, y hoy solo quiero decir que en nuestras comunidades, y escuché muchos, muchos comentarios antes sobre estar en la mesa, más a menudo nuestros residentes de Chinatown en nuestra comunidad no están en la mesa, solo porque no tenemos la oportunidad y afortunadamente tenemos gente como el consejo municipal Reyes, previamente el consejo municipal Hernández y antes de eso la señora Molina. Y sin nosotros en la mesa las cosas simplemente se van a la pelota. Esto y otros desarrolladores en la comunidad parece pensar que, y siempre escucho cuán difícil es hacer las cosas, cuán difícil es querer invertir, el punto de la cuestión es que la gente quiere seguir y desprecian las reglas y desprecian las condiciones y las cosas que se han establecido y pensamos que eso es totalmente injusto, que esta es la única forma en la que tenemos la oportunidad de estar en la mesa, de poder asegurarnos de que las cosas no se caigan por las fracturas. Los desarrolladores siempre tienen grandes representantes, unfortunate comunidades, especialmente las comunidades minoritarias y comunidades como las nuestras donde el idioma es un gran problema y es muy difícil que la gente venga y pregunte por su apoyo. Con eso en mente, nuevamente, siempre nos gusta ver el desarrollo equilibrado, siempre nos gusta ver que hay un equilibrio en términos de comprensión y asegurarnos de que los derechos de la gente sean oídos. Con eso, verdaderamente esperamos que usted apoyará esta moción en particular y que estemos, nuevamente, esperando que esta moción envíe un mensaje fuerte a todos y todas los desarrolladores de que todos tenemos reglas y debemos cumplir con ellas. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Christine Peters.
Buenas tardes consejos, mi nombre es Christine Peters y soy representante del Consejo de Echo Park Elysium, quiero especialmente agradecer al consejo municipal por tomar el balón y correr con esto, había tantos ciudadanos destrezos, enfadados en la comunidad, gente que conducía por esta propiedad a diario y estamos absolutamente asustados de ver que era tan desesperadamente y voluntariamente destruido, sin permisos de ciudad, y nuevamente asumiendo que nada iba a suceder al contractor, estamos tan felices de ver... We are so happy to see that this item has been brought up. We want to please recommend that the council pass this recommendation, and that perhaps if we could add one thing in, which would be that if we do enforce this ordinance and ask that the property, you know, the developer not be able to develop for five years, that in some way he is required to give back to the community, sort of in the way the Echo Park Community Garden came about, some kind of a land exchange where we either give it to the kids, build a ball field, open space, community garden in some part of the development of that parcel, so that this developer and every developer after him who does destroy public or historic property will know that they will be punished and have to give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Issa K. still here? I think she is left. Oh, Issa K. We have a substitute speaker. Welcome, Judith.
Yes, I'll be a very quick substitute. Excuse me. I'm a resident of that neighborhood. We have worked so hard to try to preserve that neighborhood, and to see that house go down was truly an outrage, to use Issa K.'s words. I too, like Christina, would like to see something done that's beneficial with that area. If it lies fallow for five years, it could be made into perhaps a temporary field, and so that's what I'm asking for, and I know the community is so thankful to Ed Reyes for supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly Suhu, to be followed by Kevin Kuzma.
My name is Kelly Suhu, as a member of the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council and longtime member of Chinatown. In times like today when people of power and influence are taking advantage of our community, whether it's the Neighborhood Council and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment appointing our members instead of allowing our community to elect its own representatives to G.H. Palmer, taking advantage of our community, the Chinatown youth are proud and thankful that Mr. Ed Reyes is standing up for what is right and standing up for the historic culture of our community, and the Chinatown youth support you, Mr. Ed Reyes, and urge the board to support this motion for scorched earth ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin Kuzma, to be followed by Jim Childs.
Morning, members of the city council. My name is Kevin Kuzma. I'm speaking for you this morning as the president of the Echo Park Historical Society, as a developer who's been involved with a historic house move, and as a proud Angelino. Unless you vote yes this morning, this demolition has the potential to set a terrible precedent citywide for all of our historic resources, official or not. The developers of this project, G.H. Palmer Associates, have said effectively that they've done the community a favor by tearing down an eyesore. This house only became an eyesore or a nuisance under their watch. It was occupied up until they took over. It served as low-income housing, along with the houses around it that completed the block. All of it was evicted by the developer, and during their ownership it was evicted, I'm sorry, it was vandalized, and we ask that you vote yes on this this morning to enforce the scorched earth ordinance to the full extent possible. It has been said that only this small part of the lot may be affected by the ordinance. I would ask that you still vote yes if that's the case. If not, the developer also has the potential to lose tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars of potential rental income. Should the opportunity arise, perhaps a settlement can be made between the city and the developer to fund historic resources surveys in the center of the city. This developer is working in the center of the city, the most historic part of the city, and right now, we as citizens, as the city, don't know the resources that we have. There's very few places that have been assessed officially. This house actually had been. It was found to be potential for eligibility as a national landmark. The only reason it didn't happen was because no one had completed the paperwork. We ask that you vote yes on this item and continue to explore any options for assessing what we have out there, because every day in Los Angeles, we don't know what we're losing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate your testimony. Jim Childs.
Good morning, Jim Childs. Adam Stockweiler Heritage, CD1. I'm here today to also add our organization's request that you support the motion by Councilman Reyes. I've been here before on historic demolitions. In fact, there are a few of you left who might remember going back to the McKinley where scorched earth came from in 1990, and again in 1992 when Councilman Hernandez brought forth the issues with the demolition on my own street, on Scar Street, the Hodgman House. And I was here last year when USC illegally demolished a house over on 30th Street. The time has come to put an end, and I think if you don't do it now with something as symbolic as the last house on Bunker Hill and the arrogance in which it's destroyed, then probably you're not going to do it. You have the tools, and I ask you to act on those tools. Mr. Holden talked about a world-class city with a football team. World-class cities are also judged by how they steward their historic resources, and I ask you all to be good stewards. I know Councilman Reyes is mad, I know I'm mad, I know the preservation community is mad, and I hope each and every single councilmember is mad, and I ask you, as in a scene from a movie, which is what I do for a living sometimes, I ask you to stand and be mad and tell Mr. Palmer that you're mad as hell and you're not going to take it anymore. Please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the testimony and the illusion. Before we go to our speakers, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Grohl for a quick introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I would just like to introduce one person, Donald Dickerson, who is a commissioner for the State of California for Building Standards Commission, who is here and also a constituent of mine in the San Montuhanga area, but also to ask the group American Legion Post 546 that's here taking a tour of City Hall if you would all stand and recognize you all today, our legionnaires. Thank you for being here and all that you've done for our country, and we really appreciate your coming in and listening to us here on City Council. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Grohl, and thank you all for being here as well. Our first speaker on the issue is Councilmember Reyes, to be followed by Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call up building and safety and the staff that was working with our office. Council colleagues, I can understand when someone says we didn't know, we weren't aware, but the fact is, the Thursday before the bulldoze, the home, we had building and safety, CRA, my office, and other folks involved, HPLZ folks, we had a destination, it was going to be moved up on Sunset. We had a location, we had funding, everything was put together to save this home. The bottom line is, I believe we need housing for all people. We need, we do need high income, we need moderate income, we need low income, we need housing for our firefighters, for our police, for our teachers. We want a 24-hour city. That I truly believe in. But let's not do it this way. Let's not allow developers to come in and say they're going to inhabit their way, that they're tired or whatever it is excuse they have, it was an accident, and bulldoze historic homes. We have a law in place, as was mentioned, Councilmember Gloria Molina at that time, put together and enacted the scorched earth ordinance. It's a measure, it's a policy that holds people accountable, and we need to let everyone know that our history does matter, our history can be interpreted through our architecture, our housing, our neighborhoods, and that's being erased without a second thought, and that should not be allowed. Mr. Keim, can you just tell us where we were at and the elements for our ability to inject or invoke this scorched earth policy?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. My name is Dave Keim, and I'm the chief of Building and Safety's Code Enforcement Bureau. There's actually two enforcement options that we have in this instance. The first is, we can request the city attorney to file a criminal complaint against the owner of the property for failure to secure a demolition permit prior to the demolition, and of course the second track is the so-called scorched earth ordinance, which gives the department the authority after hearing to, and if after hearing the determination is made that the demolition was done without permits, gives the department the authority to impose a no-permit issuance on that property for up to five years, and an affidavit recorded on the title of the property indicating that for any potential buyers or investors as well. Thank you. My motion also requests that the city attorney file criminal charges, given the experience, the process we had been going through, and I truly believe that this is the only way we get our message across, that our communities and our neighborhoods do matter. You know, this building was put together in 1887, I believe. It was part of the park track that was laid out by Pruden and Victor Bowdrey. It was the last remaining structure. And the anger that I feel is one in which there's a wholesale disrespect for history in the way this particular developer has conducted his business, the way he's engaged in office, the way he has treated the community. And we can't let that happen. We need to send a long message, and I encourage your support, letting everyone know that our investment is a city, and our history is truly an important investment. But I also want to echo the fact that we need housing fair and high income. We need housing fair and high income. To make a balanced city for our future. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Reyes, I recognize your frustration. I've had it over and over again when I first was elected. And prior there too. For an example, with a beautiful facility, nice home, in the Waha area, West Adams Heritage Association, at the corner of Arlington, Mr. Parks. At the corner of Arlington and Adams. And they decided they're going to put in a little school there, bungalow schools, and they knocked that house down. Today they couldn't do that, but then they did. It was a loss to that community forever. That's just one example. The other example, at the corner of Pico, Fairfax, when you go west and south, where beautiful homes, a nice environment, nice family, Zone R3, and the developers is going in there bulldozing down their homes, and we had an interim control ordinance established that says that no more permits to demolish, which probably could have saved it in my entire district, in order to save those homes there in the Windsor Village area as well. Well, the mayor vetoed, and some environmentalists who sat in the castle at the time, and Ms. Goski knows one of them, voted to sustain the mayor veto, and the very next day, they went and destroyed that neighborhood and knocked those homes down. Beautiful homes, not what you have there, there's a bunch of an apartment buildings that's bringing in a lot of trouble into the people who have not lived there in the general area, but it's destroyed. And so we have to be really continually mindful of the fact that, yes, we want more affordable housing, yes, we want to build more residences, but certainly not at expensive, taking away this very fine facility and destroying neighborhoods in the future as they did then in my district. So, this is just the beginning. You'll see it all over again. But this legal investigation and pursuit for justice is an issue that's well taken, and I support you in that effort. Let's get them and cuff them.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. We'll put that 30 seconds back in the bank too. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I remember at the end of last year, there was an industry that tried to put up billboards in areas that they weren't permitted, and there was a Hugh and Cry, Councilman Burnson had action taken against that legitimate business that was involved in something that wasn't legitimate. And what I find disturbing with this is it's a legitimate developer who's done work in the city, as I understand, that did this action. While there are sanctions to be imposed, I would wish that they would all be imposed. Have we ever had problems with this developer in the past with any activities that weren't in the legitimate nature? Secondly, if that property is left in ruin for the next five years, does that then become an eyesore for the community? Does it get overgrown with weeds, since they can't do anything with it? What happens with the property for the next five years? If you could please answer those questions.
First of all, Councilman Zine, I'm not aware of any past history with this developer in terms of demolishing without permits or similar types of violations. And I believe your second question was, what will happen with this lot if we don't allow it to be built? It's basically a vacant lot right now. There is a fence, it's actually a part, it's adjacent to several vacant lots. There's something like six or eight vacant lots surrounding this property, and although there's a fence around it, it's not the best-maintained fence at times. Will it become a problem? In my experience, it probably will become a problem for excessive vegetation, weeds, trash, debris, and dumping at some point. That's a history with these kinds of lots, and that's what we would anticipate.
That's a concern I have for an area that they're trying to maintain and improve while the developer illegally tears down the structure. Now the community is going to be faced with even more of a nuisance, more of a problem if it becomes a homeless encampment, if it becomes overgrown with reeds and infestation. I mean, what can the city do to put a pocket park or do something for the five years so it doesn't become an eyesore for the community?
Well, in terms of maintaining the lot, well, the department will monitor this lot indefinitely to ensure that it is maintained clean and secure. If at any time there's trash on it or weeds, et cetera, or the fence is broken, and so what do the owner repair it, and if he doesn't do that, we have the authority to do that work ourselves, and we impose that cost on the title of the property as an assessment eventually, as a lien, so we can do that in terms of the city providing a pocket park. It's privately owned property right now.
Well, it's privately owned property, and we have sanctions for the next five years which prevent the owner from doing anything with that property, correct?
It prevents the department, specifically the ordinance prevents the department, if it's imposed, from issuing any permits for the development of the property.
So that means that it's going to remain in its current state for the next five years.
If, in fact, this is imposed, yes.
Okay, is there any question that, what was being alleged, and I'm not familiar other than what I've read in documents and heard testimony, is there any question that this man followed the rules, and there's a mistake, or is it clear that this man violated the rules, this developer violated the rules? I know you're innocent of proving guilty, but you would know more than me on that.
In fact, Councilman, I'd rather not make the comment until the hearing is held on this case, plus there's a criminal prosecution in progress, so I'd rather not discuss those details at this point.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to stand and say that I really, I just wanted to echo what the member of the community said when he got up and said, "Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for doing what's right on behalf of the community." And, you know, I just asked Mr. Reyes a question, if this was the first time that this ordinance has been invoked since I've been on the council and he and I have been on the council, and he said, "This is the first time this ordinance has been invoked, period." And this is unfortunate, but it is absolutely the necessary test case for this ordinance for the rest of the city. So, thanks to everyone from the community who came, thanks to Mr. Bernstein from the Conservancy, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for stepping up to the plate on this, because it's a difficult issue. It's going to be in the legal arena, and we hope the prosecutors do the right thing with it and pursue justice, but thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Bernstein.
I believe that this policy came into effect after the McKinley mansion, which we were instrumental in saving the mansion, not on that site, however. We caught the developer trying to destroy it, and we managed to save the mansion, but it was moved from that site. I applaud Ed for bringing this in. I just wonder whether we have enough tools to deal with things like this in the future. You know, we're saying it can be, the scorched earth policy can be applied up to five years. Well, I don't know if that's penalty enough, to be honest with you. I just wonder, and whether we're giving that option to, who are we giving the option to on this, Dave?
I don't know if I understand the question, the option to in terms of...
Of how many years it will be held in scorched earth policy?
We've asked the city attorney, the ordinance itself, Councilman, is a discretionary ordinance. It says, it doesn't say that the department shall invoke it, it says we shall have the authority to invoke it, and it says further, we shall have the authority to record this affidavit on the title for five years. In terms of whether... In terms of whether or not we can limit that less than five years, we have that question before the city attorney.
Well, I just wonder whether Ed would accept a federal amendment that we instruct the city attorney, that there shall be a minimum of five years restriction on any use of this property and that the property shall be maintained at the owner's expense and if it is not done, then the property shall be taken care of by our public works department and leaned in order to make sure the city recovers any loss of funds. Yes, we need to send a strong message here. This is the first time in a long time that this has happened. And I can't believe that the owner was not, this is a builder who's done business in the city before in other areas. I can't believe they were not aware of the fact they have to have a demolition for it. So I just hope that we're gonna proceed with the strongest type of measure we can. I believe unfortunately, this is only a misdemeanor, is that correct?
Um, yeah, in terms of the criminal charge that we're asking the city attorney to file, it's punishable by a maximum of a thousand dollars and our six months for each kind of violation, which is a misdemeanor in the state of California.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we can't do more than that, but I would hope that whenever this, whenever the city attorney takes this criminal charge, that he will press for the six months in prison. And let's make an example of this so it doesn't happen again. You accept my amendment on that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burnson. Ms. Kaski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I share the sentiments expressed both by Mr. Reyes and the community. And I think how there should be another amendment. I think we should look to amend the ordinance so it doesn't say the department may withhold a building permit, but it says the department shall withhold a building permit in all future cases where we find this. This is called the scorched earth ordinance for a reason. It really does scorch the earth, take something that was precious away from it. We do have two other applications of a withhold the permit for five years that have been invoked, not under a historic designation, but at least, well, one other at least, on the issue of demolition of apartments. We passed many years ago as a city council, an ordinance requiring relocation assistance to be given to tenants in a building if it was gonna be demolished or something new was gonna be built there. And in that ordinance, I believe it does say that the department shall withhold a building permit on the premise if the owner cannot prove that relocation was given to the previous tenants who occupied it. So that one is a shall and it is invoked and has been invoked. And we've also invoked it, I have a case now in Mr. Zine's district in Woodland Hills where we have a specific plan and the zoning administrator went through a process of saving some oak trees under the Gerard Track. This, similar situation, the oak trees on the property were marked to be saved, there was a line on them, somebody came through and cut down the oak trees. They were dumb enough to cut the oak trees down above the line, which marked the trees that were to be saved. So you saw there the stumps with a mark on them saying to be saved. And it was, and the zoning administrator came right in and invoked a five-year penalty on that property to not be built for a single-family house. So we have invoked it, we need to invoke it, subject to the findings here, I have no problem with the two amendments on imposing the maximum restriction on a non-build on this property and, and literally over, over time, let's amend this ordinance so that it is not discretionary. When found fault, it's an automatic five-year suspension of any permits being issued for building on the site. It truly is the only way we can not only teach the people involved in this particular case the lesson as to what the city means, but it really will send a very, very, very strong message across the development community that this is not something to toy with. When those designations occur and those rules are imposed, we mean that, we mean what we say and we now have tools to enforce it. Over and over again, we say we need tougher enforcement tools. In a land-owning, property-owning world, this is one of the toughest rules that we can impose and we should do it with regularity, with severity, and with cause when we find people who are violating it.
Thank you, Ms. Kaski. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I wanted to rise, yes, to support Councilman Reyes and the motion before us and to commend him for responding so quickly and so firmly with this, to this egregious action. But colleagues, I wanted to bring to all of our attention and to the attention of the public, sort of a macro observation of what's going on here. Far too often, this city council and individual members of this council get pegged, get labeled, get attacked or accused of running over for developers or being in the pockets of developers or to, that we don't stand up to proposed developments and we don't advocate enough on behalf of the community. Once in a blue moon, we have a big issue, an egregious issue, such as today, that does highlight the fact that council members do say no, council members do fight back. And it happens more often than we read about. The public doesn't see or hear when we say no to developers in our offices. The public doesn't see when we push back or when we force developers into a compromise because that's what's best for the community. And so in addition to, again, supporting the motion before us and Councilman Reyes in this quest, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge it just as an example of the give and take that happens on a daily basis in each council district and in each council office. Because we are concerned about the future of our city, we are concerned about the future and the growth of specific communities. So for all the times that where it's said that each council district is a fiefdom and we're each in charge of our own fiefdom in a negative way, there is a positive piece to that. There is a positive in the sense that we know our districts, we know them well, and we know what's good for the community and we know what's not. And on many of occasions, we'll work with the developer to try to accept development proposals that are win-win for the community, but on occasions, there's times to say no, there's times to push back. And in this case, given the actions and the behavior of this developer, it's not only enough to push back, it's time to fight back. And that's what's happening under Mr. Reyes's leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Next, I would like to recognize council member from the fourth district, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is very sad that someone would do that to us. I remember we were moving houses off of Bunker Hill in the early seventies and right by Felipe's, they parked a grand old Victorian there and it was torched and burnt and was lost. It was on its way to Heritage Square on that. But this particular building could have been found a place, had found it a home and found it the love that it needs and you can't duplicate that. So it's very sad that someone would do this to the property. So I support this here. I would just like to also ask, Mr. Kind, do we have an individual, is our cultural affairs department, there are many more buildings like this out here, I just wanna learn from this powerful experience, should we be more aggressive in saying that has a potential that may not be on the historic registration list?
Well, I believe the cultural heritage does have a list of buildings that are listed as having historical significance or registered.
Well, I know that, but you, your building department, you're out there every day, you're the eyes and ears.
Yes, whenever there, whenever there's a building that has registered, we, that's marked on the city maps and we're able to pick that up when permit applications come in so that we see to, they get the proper level of review before they make alterations. I think it's important to clarify, the existing ordinance, as it's written right now, does not, is not limited to just historical buildings. The department has the authority to impose this scorched earth ordinance on any demolition, on any building in the city. So if there is a consideration to make this a requirement that we impose it, I think there needs to be probably some more discussion on what limitation on demolition. Well, it's unusual for an entire building to be demolished without permits. It's not unusual for people to alter existing buildings and do partial demolitions. So I think we need to really take a look at whether we wanna make that an absolute requirement for all levels of demolition.
Now, Mr. Kind, you call it scorched the earth?
Scorched earth ordinance is...
See, I like the earth, so I think you should scorch the person who did wrong. So I think we should change the ordinance from scorched the earth to scorch the person who did wrong, or persons, in that reflection there. And I also wanna say, members, I've talked about a housing court to focus these type of issues on. I support, you know, the neighborhood prosecutor program, but not only on that aspect, I'm just making a little play on this, that there be, because you mentioned about those oak trees, that there be in the seven regional areas of the city, a prosecutor from the city attorney's office who followed the planning department and the building department and hand in hand on these issues. Because sometimes those neighborhood prosecutors get tied up in a lot of various quality of life issues. And if they were focused just on the, the building and land use issues, I think they'd be more effective tool. I thank you and I think it should be scorched, the guy who did it wrong. And, and, yeah, because the earth is too good to all of us and should be anyway. Thank you, Mr. President. You're a Rhodes Scholar, figure the term.
Thank you, Tom Leviticus Labange. All right, Mr. Reyes.
Maybe it should be scorched the violator, no? I, I do want to say thank you to the community, Mr. Burnson, everyone that came out, thank you for your support. And colleagues, I do hope we can send a loud message. I hope it does not get misinterpreted. We are struggling, we have some challenges before us when it comes to housing, promoting housing in our districts, in the city, making the city of L.A., downtown of Twenty-Four City, all of those things are important, all of those things I support. But there's a reason why we have laws, there are communities we need to respect, there's a history we need to preserve. When I look at it, I look at our young people, if we can point to homes and talk about the history of a neighborhood, talk about things as intangible, as self-esteem and pride in a community, a sense of history, it's our structures that do that. If we eliminate those, we eliminate that opportunity to demonstrate and show our young people about those kinds of historic landmarks that do mean something to us as we grow, as we become mature, and as we evolve as a city. So for those reasons, I'm hoping you can support me again. Thank you, folks, for coming down and let's send a loud statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Final speaker, Mr. Holden, for a second time.
Mr. City Attorney, it just seemed to me that it's not enough of a penalty to say you can't develop a property with five years. I, I think if you can find a way to continue to assess the property as its current assessment value with improvements as if they were still there, then of course, that developer is spending some additional funds. They perhaps will go to the county and say, "Now, reappraise this property, reassess this property, there are no improvements." And yet they violate the city law by removing the improvements. As anything can be done in that regard if it all...
Councilman, I'm not sure, perhaps we could pose that question to the city attorney's office.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I think that as we ask the city attorney to look into the matter, that might be something that they should consider because it's a difference in the tax assessment of the property when improvements are gone.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Councilmembers, seeing no other colleagues wishing to speak, can Madam Clerk, please let us know what's before us.
There are two amendments, and I believe both were accepted as friendly amendments. First one, Mr. Burnson's amendment to request the city attorney to impose a minimum of five years and also to require that the property owner maintain the property at the owner's expense. And if not, then the city would clean it and a lien would be imposed. And also Councilmember Ms. Kaski's motion to amend the ordinance to instead of may withhold billing permit to substitute shall.
Okay, those have both been accepted as friendly amendments. All right. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen and nine.
That is passing unanimously. Fourth with, please, on that.
Mr. President, members, Mr. Holden. We've been taking items out of order. Item twenty-seven was held over from last week because we didn't get to it. A gentleman from the city attorney's office, he's a high-paid personnel, sat here for over four hours, and he's again four hours a day. It's an easy item, he's just gonna give us a report. Can we take item twenty-seven?
There's no objection, colleagues. We'll take item twenty-seven out of order as our next, you know, we've done fourth with on that, Mr. Burnson. Oh, nineteen, fourth with on nineteen as well. Mr. City Attorney, please.
Okay, good morning. James Axteile, Deputy City Attorney. Not that well paid, unfortunately, Mr. Holden. This was simply a report that we had made to the Public Safety Committee concerning a recent decision by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in which the court upheld almost in whole the state of California's regulations concerning the possession and sale of assault weapons. The reason that we had brought the report forward is because the court, in upholding the regulations, discussed a number of federal constitutional issues that seems to always come up whenever firearm regulations are being considered. And so we wanted the council to know about those. Basically, there were three of those important issues that the court discussed. One was the Second Amendment issue, the right to keep and bear arms. The second was an equal protection issue that came up in the context of exemptions to the prohibitions and the regulations. And the third was a takings clause issue, the takings clause being the clause in the Fifth Amendment, which says that if the government takes your property, it must make just compensation for that. With respect to the Second Amendment issue, the Ninth Circuit has held now that the Second Amendment does not include a personal, individual right to bear arms. In the view of the Ninth Circuit, the Second Amendment is a right of the state in relation to the keeping of a state militia. And so individuals are not able to come forward and make the argument that they have Second Amendment rights, which may cause a particular regulation concerning firearms to be unconstitutional. It's important to understand that this decision is not necessarily the same as the decision of the other federal circuit courts, so there is a split in the authority. The Supreme Court has not taken up the issue yet, they may take up the issue sometime soon. However, for now, we can follow the Ninth Circuit's decision and the city does not have to concern itself with a Second Amendment issue at this point. With regard to the equal protection issue, the plaintiffs argued that some of the exemptions to the regulations were unconstitutional under the equal protection clause. The court agreed with them as to one of those exemptions, which was the exemption for retired police officers. The court held that there was no rational basis for allowing retired police officers not to be subject to the regulations when ordinary people were. So that's an issue that we would have to keep in mind or should keep in mind whenever we're considering firearms regulations in the future. The most important issue for, in terms of how it may affect the city's consideration of future regulations, was the takings clause issue. The plaintiffs argued that with respect to persons who own or possess firearms at the time that they become illegal to possess, have suffered a taking because the government has in essence not allowed them to use their property anymore. In the state regulations, there's a grandfather clause that allows people who own weapons at the time that they are made illegal to continue to own them if they are willing to register them with the state and if they are willing to only use them for certain very limited purposes. So because of those, that grandfather clause, the court upheld the regulations and said that there was not any taking. The problem for the city is that we cannot use that same kind of grandfather clause because the state of California has already made a clear pursuit to statute that it is the only one that can enact legislation concerning licensing or permitting of firearms. So that's an issue that we would have to figure out some way to address each time that we want to enact some kind of regulation concerning the possession of firearms. Those are basically the issues that the court addressed there. The court did not address the issue, the other main issue that we always have, which is the state law preemption issue, the question of what are we allowed to regulate when the state has engaged in regulation? But we wanted the court, we wanted the council to know about these other issues, which will come up as you consider future firearms regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members wishing to be heard on this? Mr. Holden?
Today and some time ago, Mr. Rigler Thomas introduced a motion addressing the issue of fifty-caliber semi-automatic weapons. And today, there's another motion coming through to do the same thing, asking that the state, not that we in the city of Los Angeles are prohibiting and making it a law that you cannot possess, own, or buy such a weapon, but to ask the state to support that kind of legislation. Now, is the state prohibited from that type of weapon? Does this type of weapon fall within the assault weapon category?
Currently, there are some fifty-caliber weapons that would be included as assault weapons because of the features that those weapons have. It's possible, however, that there are some fifty-caliber weapons that currently are not regulated by the assault weapons regulations. regulations that were at issue in this case. I believe that's the reason that the state is currently considering passing new legislation to increase the categories of 50 caliber weapons that will be subject to regulation.
You're answering a question while the time is running. That's okay. My question is then, it doesn't fall within assault weapon categories, what you're saying? 50 caliber machine gun, it was this big.
Well, a machine gun would be a machine gun and it's illegal under another.
Semi-automatic, semi-automatic. Same as AK-47, semi-automatic.
I think the best answer I can give you is there are some 50 caliber weapons that are currently not prohibited pursuant to the assault weapons regulations of the state. There are some that are, but there are some that are not.
Okay, now, Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, have you got your information?
Yes.
And you also said that there are other circuit courts took just an opposing position? Where are those courts and what states are they representing?
The most recent decision taking the opposite view is the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, which includes Texas and Oklahoma and some other states.
What position did they take?
That court held that there is a personal individual right to bear arms under the Second Amendment.
Notwithstanding the weapon, assault weapon, et cetera, just arms in general?
Yes, the court did not go into great detail into how it would figure out what the exact parameters of that right are. It simply held that it believed that there is a right to keep and bear arms and it is something that an individual would be able to assert in defense of being charged with some kind of weapons crime.
Okay, was any such law passed in that area by any state similar to what we passed in the city of California, which caused that action to be taken by that court?
I don't believe that that had to do specifically with an assault weapons issue. It was an issue of whether or not a convicted person was allowed to continue to possess firearms.
Well, it's a different case altogether. That's not apples and bananas. The two cases. Whereas we in the state of California talked about assault weapons and corporate was known as a grandfather clause for those who had the weapon, only required to register the weapon after the date it became law compared to some ex-convict possessing just a weapon in general. When this argument gets United States Supreme Court, they're looking at two different arguments. Felon possessing a weapon and just assault weapons in general. You can't forecast what the outcome is going to be, but certainly the approach to the defense or the state's position should be different because there are two different sets of circumstances. Would you agree to that?
Well, I think that the first issue the court would have to figure out is whether it thinks there is a personal right to keep and bear arms. And then the court would have to figure out exactly what the parameters are of that right. In other words, when the government would be able to regulate and how they would be able to regulate. And then once it did that, it would be able to determine how that right applies to either assault weapons regulations or to other regulations of active convicted felonies.
As you explained to me, that the state of California law clearly states that you have a right to bear arms, but under certain circumstances and certain weapons after a certain given date period. And the date is you cannot have assault weapons after that becomes law. And those who have assault weapons prior to the legislation becoming law, then they would be grandfathered in. So they say you can't have it. Is that correct?
I believe, if I understood you right, I believe that's correct, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Ms. Kowski.
Basically, I just wanted to thank Mr. Holden for letting this be discussed. We had a good discussion of the safety. What we learned is that some of the recent court cases have allowed the state of California and to some degree the city of Los Angeles to go further in regulation of firearms than we thought. There is less impediment in terms of the federal side, a little more concern or question about what the state does. But as long as we keep getting our state legislators putting in the good bills that we are supporting, which is the motion that Mr. Holden agreed to sign today, a seconding on the 50 caliber ban, it goes further than the earlier one. The earlier one was promoting the ban on what might be called a 50 caliber assault weapons. Because there is a loophole and as we learn this jargon, there are weapons of 50 caliber that may not technically be considered assault weapons. So this motion today in support of the state legislation is going to support the two pieces that deal with non-assault 50 caliber weapons. And I think we will hopefully see passage of that at the state level, but we want to have the city in support of it. So we are keeping on track, pushing as far as we can within the regulations that are being applied in court to try to pursue as avidly as possible the banning of the type of weapons and ammunition that we know can be doing harm in our city. And so we keep a sort of tally running in the public works committee and work very closely with the city attorney who gives us the reports and tells us where that latitude is. It is allowed and can take us in terms of support for legislation that is pending in Sacramento and which the city ourselves might consider. So it was a good status report as a consequence of knowing some of those things falling through the cracks, we were bringing in the motions to support the legislation that closed those loopholes.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to be heard? Not? We'll note and file this, Mr. Holden?
President, members, I just wanted to share this with the...
You pressed your button one more time, Mr. Holden?
I did. I want to share this with the public and with the attorney. It's the People Magazine. And in 1989, it was the beginning of the ban of the assault weapons. There stands a city council member, I won't mention his name, AK-47, and Uzis around him that he had purchased and now it was shredded. And that was the beginning of the ban of the assault weapons. In fact, the city council, Lawrence Zevi, I saw myself urgently impose the first ban. And we had the right to do that because the state had not preempted us at that time, local government. And the state has preempted us. And we can recommend and suggest as we do with Ms. Kowski's bill. So the city has always been out front, first on the front line in order to control the influx of these assault weapons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Ms. Kowski, second round?
That same unmentioned council member had a buyback program a few years back in City Hall when we were in this building. And I, at that time, was a staff member with Councilmember Browdy. And was rather frightened as I was walking down the corridors of City Hall with people coming to the council member's office to get the money for the buyback. And these people were carrying weapons, large rifles, walking into City Hall to get to the council's office to get the buyback coupon for these weapons. I don't know that that particular program could work anymore today with our heightened security. But it was successful and he had people coming into City Hall with these weapons to turn them in to get the rebate and the buyback. But so that our colleague has been in the forefront of this for quite some time.
Thank you. I know he's been trying to buy back Mr. Zine's weapon for some time, unsuccessfully. All right, we have the committee report before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is noted and filed. Next item, please.
Item number 14, called special by Councilmember Holden.
By Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, item 14.
I'm going to make this really quick and give back some time. We're going to have a report. We're going to have a report. This is a motion introduced by Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Goldberg a long time ago as it relates to providing funding for after-school programs. And it was received and filed. It was held up. How many years ago in my time did you guys do this? 1995, 1996 budget. And as you discovered, that sometime you put a motion in, referred to during the budget discussion, it refers to finance committee, it never gets out. So therefore, you never know what's done regarding the fact that we need these kind of programs at various schools where there is no park. The idea was that in a community where there's no park within a certain number of miles or so on, the schools would stay open from after-school for recreational purposes. And the city of Los Angeles would fund those programs. We would like to have a status report before we receive and file this report.
This is from the budget 1995, 96, Mr. Holden. So we'll hear now from the CAO's office on this, on the update, okay?
In 1994 through 1996, our budget provided $3.5 million for the LAUSD extended day and weekend recreational program. The funding was eliminated in 96, fiscal year 96 and 97, and then 98 and 99. However, funding was reinstated for fiscal years 97 through 98 and then fiscal year 99 and 00. Subsequent to the 99-00 budget, LAUSD agreed to continue the program to maintain its current level of service. Following that decision, the mayor and consul funded LA's BEST program for approximately a million dollars a year. Now, LAUSD does have a program called Beyond the Bell, which represents their, you know, their effort to continue this program. But it is funded through LAUSD's dollars.
Thank you for that update, Ms. Holden.
LA BEST is not the same as the after-school program.
But the Beyond the Bell program is, Beyond the Bell as in the closing bell of school, is LAUSD's program for extended, some extended services.
The reason I raise the question, which you're open, is that is the city of Los Angeles positioned still the same as it was before? Shall it always be to provide a recreational environment for after-school children? And when you say we gave it to LA BEST, that's not the same thing. And when we give it, depending on LA Unified School District, who's crying for money, is that the same thing? We don't know. And if it isn't, if it isn't, then what is the commitment of the city of Los Angeles that then and now? We had a good program in place and then they stopped funding it. And that's what we're talking about. Are there any funds? Is there any assurance that those recreational programs are in place to date? If the answer is no, then it's something we might have to look at.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. If we can have the item before us, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. That updated item is received and filed. Next item, please.
Item number 17, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We think this is a continuance from a week or so ago. And I think most questions were from myself. And Mr. Holden, you're going to give us some information on how contractors can get involved on the pre-qualified list and how they would go about it and get the training and variety and things of that nature.
Yes, Councilman. The Housing Department is a lender. We make loans to low-income homeowners who want to repair their single-family homes, or to owners of apartments that have tenants who are low-income. As a lender, we make a loan to the borrower, and the borrower in turn picks a contractor. And the owner enters into a contract with that contractor. The city encourages as many contractors as possible to be on a list. As an example, we have a list right now of around 200 contractors. We're always looking for more. We have orientations where we explain the program as an example. Our most recent orientation was April 10th of last month. Based upon the interest of a contractor, we will do a background check to make sure that the license is valid with a California Royal License. We want to make sure they have the proper business license and the proper insurance. And then we suggest to the borrower, here's a list. Some of our contractors only want to work in certain geographic areas, which is fine. So in our five field offices and our four contract agencies, we provide a list of contractors who want to work that particular geographic neighborhood. And we assure the borrower that we did our best to do a background check on that contractor. But at that point, it's up to the owner and contractor to enter into a contract.
Where would you get information from by the general public to find out where the five locations and what is the process to become pre-qualified?
Sure. Well, number one, we're on the website. And we do a lot of outreach meetings. We look with council offices who have neighborhood fairs. And upon their request, we have staff who attend the meetings, solicit borrowers through brochures and fact sheets and so forth. We have access to material that we have in hand, if any, of my constituents or not, on the website. Sure. It's finding it difficult to locate that. Well, we work with different council offices. We will provide copies of the brochures for your field offices. As an example, about two weeks, we're going to brief your office on what we've done in your council district the last four or five years. And in there you'll have much information, resource guides, phone directories, all those kinds of things. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, this is, could be a good program. And it could end up in some cases being a fraudulent program imposed on senior citizens who are not familiar with the forms and facts and the law. The state's right here that you have a list of contractors. You also have a contract monitor, right? And when there's a dispute, the contract monitor is left out of dispute and is left between the contractor and the client to resolve the matter. It seemed to me to be clear in your own report here.
No, I think we go on to explain, Councilman, that that's the first option is for the two parties to sit down to resolve.
See, that's the first option.
And then the second option, we will come in with our staff person who will work with both the owner and the contractor.
Yeah, but the final, the final option for the plaintiff is that you, if you can't get a resolution to the problem, which you've involved the plaintiff in, then your suggestion is that they go to the state's contracting license board. I mean, that's crazy. The fact of the matter is that these contractors should not receive payment in full. In some cases, they are. They should not, if you have a contract monitor, the contract monitor should be monitoring the progress of the work that's being done, protecting the homeowner for the most part as a senior citizen.
Yeah, we agree with the Councilman. And the payments for the work done is on a progressive basis. If, and it starts first with the contractor submitting the bill to the owner. And if the owner does not agree with the work, that owner will not have to pay that contractor. We work with that contractor, that owner, to resolve those kinds of disputes. We find that our, we do about 200 loans per year, and we probably average around eight or 10 where we have these kinds of problems.
Let me just tell you that I've known people who lost their homes, there were big legal disputes just because of this kind of merger.
Not through our program, sir.
No, no, no. I know a lady who had a, years ago, in the program, okay? And the contractor then put a lien on her property, okay? She subsequently was not aware of all of the complexities associated with that activity and lost her home. And there were no contractor, contract monitor was nowhere to be found. I mean, it's a good program, but there's collusion. It takes place sometime. Now, you know, everybody can't be altogether honest. And what I'm saying to you, I'm not going to indict anybody in the council floor, but I'm saying to you that there's some foxes in the chicken coop. And if that's the case, then there are problems obviously are going to generate from there, arrangement. And it happens a lot and too often. Now, I would suggest to you, for Mr. Parks and others, why don't you give us a list of how many arrangements you have right now going on? And what's the status of them? Report back to the council.
Sure. In fact, we're preparing a report.
Report back to the council whether or not there's any dispute, if there's any problems. Identify what the problems areas are and who's engaged in the problem.
Sure. Councilman, in responding to Councilwoman Winnie Gruel's motion to report on the NPP, which is the primary program, we can add that provision to the report.
Right, when will you be reporting back?
It's going back in about a couple of weeks.
Oh, that'll be fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Mr. Reyes?
I just want to thank my colleagues for bringing this to light. I know the Housing Department is working hard to do its job, but I also know that somehow we have to put some kind of a, you have a monitor, right, in this program?
Yes.
But there should be like spot checks on how the folks who are taking these loans, what's happening in their case. Many times, the folks don't speak English. They trust an authority figure. They see the city of LA with a card, and they say, I'm going to be treated right. And I'm speaking from experience. I literally saw a case where an individual was close to losing their home. Their home was, the roof, all the work that the contractor did was out of code. It was a complete breakdown. And I started looking at what projects were happening in that area. And it wasn't the only case. Now, this was four or five years ago. But when you started speaking and Mr. Holden and Mr. Parks started raising these questions, I mean, I can't believe that... questions, I mean, I can't believe that it's still as prevalent as it seems to sound. I mean, is it that prevalent?
As I said, we're averaging around eight or ten cases a year where we have this complaint.
Eight or ten out of how many?
About two hundred a year.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I would just hope that we could be a little bit more creative in how we do the spot check, try to control it, and find who these contractors are that aren't really meeting the standards that I think you said, because I think you're doing the kind of job where you want to have quality, quality control. We are civil servants, we're supposed to be serving these folks, and it's unfortunate there's that kind of abuse. It always seems to happen to the most vulnerable people.
We agree.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Seeing no other colleagues wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk, if you can please open the roll on the item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
No. Item number eighteen, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Councilmember Parks. Item number eighteen.
Can we have staff come up on the transportation issues?
I'm Valerie Pryor from the Department of Transportation.
Yeah. I would just like you to kind of walk me through this, primarily because I'm not familiar with the process that we use for this trust fund and how it gets funded, and primarily how projects from different districts get involved or get approved. And so I just need you to walk me through that.
Okay. The Transportation Grant Fund is a revolving fund for various transportation projects. The significant bulk are from the MTA call for projects. Each project gets an account within that fund. The fund receives the city fund and matching funds, and also the MTA grant funds. Each project account, then, when funded, many of the expenditures can be made from the Transportation Grant Funds, such as for construction contracts, and then a small part of that needs to be transferred to city departments for staff salaries and overtime and related costs. That's the bulk of what you see in this report. So, in each Transportation Grant Fund, you'll see the city transfer its front and matching funds generally from Proposition C, and receive MTA grant funds for that fiscal year. Those funds will join any funds already in the account or the funds from previous fiscal years. In general, the MTA call for projects is every other year. We are dealing with city departments, council offices right now, and two thousand three call for projects applications. When the reprogramming is approved, is it determined if the cost is less than proceed? No, the MTA does not allow us to reprogram the funds.
So, once we put in place that every other year, we move forward. The other thing I didn't quite understand is that there's something about a revolving account, that money's coming to this count routinely, or is it a set amount for two years?
The total amount per project is a set amount. For example, if we had an award for a million-dollar project, the city would provide two-hundred thousand, and the grant would be for eight-hundred thousand. So, the total amount is set. But because the MTA provides the funds on a fiscal year basis, as does the city, it revolves in the sense that for a four-year project, we would only be putting each fiscal year's funds into the fund that fiscal year. So, in that sense, it's a revolving fund.
Okay. When it's stated in this report, this accounts for sixty-six million dollars in funds, that's over a longer period than this fiscal year.
Correct. The total cost of the projects runs over many fiscal years.
So, that fund would include projects that were funded and completed, and projects that are still in process?
Correct. Projects that have been totally completed, the money would be gone, but we still have projects from ninety-three, ninety-five, ninety-seven, ninety-nine, and the two thousand one calls. And then there are a few projects in the two thousand one through two thousand seven call, which are for later years, which have not been funded yet.
When we look at this figure, these are all projects that are not completed. If they were completed, they would not be in this report.
Correct.
Okay. So, when we look at the sixty-six million, it may be over a five or six-year period, but they're chugging along through the system.
Yes.
Now, also on some of these projects, would you assume that this is the total funding, or would they, in next year's call for projects, we continue to fund some that are listed in this proposal?
Yes. Next year, we have the money that was programmed for next fiscal year. When we make the application to the MTA and then the MTA awards a grant, each project actually has a cash flow stating in which fiscal years the funds will be provided. We budget our funds that way, and in general, we transfer them in this report according to those cash flows.
And every project here has matching funds from the city?
Yes.
Now, do we make a decision on what matching funds go, or do we wait until the MTA has decided on what they're going to agree on, on the grant?
In general, in the past, the MTA, the rules were either for a twenty or a thirty-five percent match. I believe in the two thousand three call, the MTA is only asking for a twenty percent match, but the match amount is determined by the MTA.
Okay. And then when is the next call for projects?
We are working on the two thousand three call for projects right now with the MTA.
And when do they do the MTA?
We have provided our grant applications to the MTA. The MTA is not issuing decisions yet because they are waiting for the state budget decisions. Some of the money the MTA would program in the call would be local MTA funds, and some would be state and federal funds.
Okay.
They don't know the future of those funds.
So, that each council office is now submitting to you the proposals?
Right. We've already received them and prioritized them and sent them to the MTA, but it is a citywide process. We work with all city departments and all city council offices.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Holden.
Senior Holden.
These are call for projects. Let's go to page four, number sixteen, for street, for the Bureau of Street Services Work Program. Have you identified where that work's going to be done? I mean, that's just one of them. And then let's go, start out with the Advanced Transit Management System Program. Where is that work going to be done? And the, that's eight, and then ten, AT SAC program, and bikeways program. I mean, where is the bikeway? I mean, did we put specific bikeways in the call for project? Or can you put those bikeways where they're needed, or would like to be utilized?
They are the bikeways that were approved by the MTA.
And you know which ones they are? They're in attachments someplace?
Yes, they are in the attachments. For each one of the recommendations that transfers funds to departments, it references a table. For example, for recommendation sixteen, the Bureau of Street Services, it would be table number eight.
All right. Before you go to the table, let me just say this, then. My question is, why the Department of Transportation submits the request to MTA in the call for project program, what they would like to do, where they would like to have an AT SAC program to keep traffic moving, right? That's number one. Number two, they'd like to know where the bikeway program, what bikeways they're going to bring in during that period of time. It doesn't appear that those bikeways are being given consideration in, in the city in certain areas that Mr. Parks is discussing, or the AT SAC program to keep track moving, traffic moving, with the automated traffic, signal, control, you know?
Well, the citywide task force that develops the list of projects looks at the MTA's criteria for evaluation, and all city agencies that participate wrote on the list of prioritized projects. And in general, we try to match the MTA's requirements for funding. We don't always receive funding in the order that we request the projects, but in the order that the MTA provides that funding.
At one point in time, the Department of Transportation would come to various council persons and ask them what they would like to recommend to be considered as a call for project in their respective areas and where the need was. In fact, you suggested them where there was a need, like an AT SAC, AT SAC or bikeway or some other transportation need. They have been doing that lately.
I believe we have a more formalized process where we actually have a task force, and all council offices, all departments are invited to participate in that task force.
Which we were not aware of in my office, and I've been around a long time. What I would suggest is that we go back to the old way of doing it, where you just ask each council person to submit a list of priorities, at least for their district, where there's a transportation need that should be met, especially if traffic's being bogged down or you need left-turn signals, or you need traffic signals in certain places to keep the traffic flowing. And that would be, money's coming from MTA and uses the match with our Prop C money, where we wouldn't have to use our own money for traffic signals, or left-turn signals, or road widening, or divided, see what I'm saying? I would think that that's something you should offer us in the future, as you have in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Parks?
Just one question. What is the name of the task force that you mentioned that's reviewing this citywide?
I think it might be the interdepartmental task force on the call for projects, not a very descriptive name.
Thank you. Colleagues, now this item before us. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That item is approved.
I'd like to request that this go forth with please.
It's about to say that. We'll deal that forth with. Thank you very much. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Item number twenty-one, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Item number twenty-one, Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden? Item number twenty-one is before us. Ms. Miskowski.
Go ahead, Ms. Miskowski, that's fine. I spoke to the senator yesterday, but you go ahead.
I think, I think what I'd like to do, this had been recommended to oppose, until we, we talked for the last couple of weeks about the state senator, and she had been willing to go along with the city's request to increase the board membership on this new expedition light rail line authority. And I would like to see that we just put the council in support of this bill based on the, well, with the amendment, subject to the amendment, that it will be increased to the city council membership. The city membership doesn't necessarily need to be city council. The city representative, representative membership that is consistent with the majority of the land that, through which this line goes, which is in the city of Los Angeles. So, that would be my motion.
Okay. Got a second for Mr. Rice? Mr. Holden?
Second from the audience.
Well, support what? That's the question. The bill that presently passed the policy committee yesterday was something that we cannot support, and should not support. Are you aware of that?
Subject to amendment, that it increases the membership of the city of Los Angeles representation.
And which we're not being specific. I understand the point you're making. If it increases the member, representation to three, and if it's not three, then what?
It's subject to that amendment.
Then what would, what should be the position of the city council?
Well, I think we might have a difference of opinion. I support the bill absolutely, but I think the city's position should be to support the bill only if amended, to include up to three, include three specific LA member represent.
Well, I agree with that. Now, let me just point out a couple of facts. Fact number one, the expedition right-of-way is about eighty-five, ninety percent of the city of Los Angeles. And expedition right-of-way of that portion, maybe sixty-plus percent is located in the eighth, ninth and tenth district. And the people in that area is going to need some representation to have some assurance that if there's a line going through, subsequently built, will not be at great level in the sort of their living environment. And we can't ramorize something through and then later on, after the fact, say, oh, we got a problem, or make it a great level like the blue line and get everybody killed trying to cross it. So, we have to have some understanding coming with a comprehensive program with the community being involved in the process. And I would say that to take less than three representatives is not a good idea at all. I spoke to the senator yesterday, and she said she would like to have our support, but what she did say is that now that we're asking for three representatives, the county is now asking for an additional, they have two, we had one, they're asking for three representatives as well. And this could go on. She's in the process of trying to negotiate with the county, and she would like to have the support of the city of Los Angeles. I think you're aware of this, or is that correct?
That's right.
But I think that we should be in opposition to this measure unless and until, and I will relay this message to the senator again, unless and until we have three members represented on this board by the city of Los Angeles with a point of authority. Otherwise, we have no voice. If you have no voice, then the construction can get out of control. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms.?
Can I just add, Mr. Holden? Are you willing to say we oppose it until these are added, but when they're added, we would support it?
Absolutely. I like that.
Then I, then I have no problem with that.
Right. Then I take the motion as amended. It's right compatible with my motion that I originally introduced. Minimize my motion on this item, then that'll be fine. I'll accept it. Friendly amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden and Ms. Miskowski. Go with that friendly amendment to the motion. Now have that before, so if you can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. That'll be part of our legislative program. Next item, please.
Our next item, Mr. President, item number twenty-five, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden?
It'll be so short, hold it. This is going to be so short while I leave. You've got that right. All right. We got some FEMA money coming over here, and I think you'd just like to know about that. Make it short, because they want to get out of here. They don't care how important it is, they just want to leave. The fire department will get some FEMA money, free equipment, weapons of mass destruction. Is that what it is?
Yes, sir. It's grant money for it.
Grant money for weapons of mass destruction in the city of Los Angeles, so the federal government is providing funding for that purpose, is that correct? Tell us about it.
Well, we've been participating here in the city of Los Angeles for ten years on FEMA's Urban Search and Rescue Program. And two years ago, they expanded the program to include weapons of mass destruction, which enhances our capability, increases the team from sixty-two to seventy, and gives us more equipment. And subsequent to September eleventh, they've significantly increased our funding, and for this year's grant, they've allotted seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to all twenty-eight teams in the United States. So, that's what we're eligible for, is seven forty right now. Full continued enhancements to our program. They've earmarked basically two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for administrative support, two-hundred-thousand for training, one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand for additional equipment purchases, ten-thousand for operation readiness and evaluation, and a hundred thousand for planning, engineering, and renovation costs. Yes. Each of the teams gets seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand for that, each of the twenty-eight. Our portion is seven forty.
Will you not be called to work with the home security program that much closer?
Not really. FEMA is, administrates this program, and we deal directly with them. They tell us what equipment we should have, what, what the training criteria is, and they even recommend how this money should be used for administrative support, and that's how we arrived at asking for two captain ones and a management analyst just to manage the documentation and administrative support for this program.
Very good. But they're not working with, at all with the home security program?
Well, FEMA is under, a part of Homeland Security. I'm not sure what happens on...
Well, in that case, as long as they're working, you know, they're not spending money over here and money over there, and the program is not merged, as long as the program is somewhere, it's considered to be merged.
No. Yeah, it's separate.
All right.
Yes.
Find any weapons, let me know.
Well, I'm glad you brought this special, you know, because it's, it's, it is of interest. I'm, in my opinion, there's only one major area in the city that we could actually have weapons of mass destruction, that's certainly through our port and our harbor. How is this money going to be used to be prepared for weapons of mass destruction that may come into our harbor?
Entitle the term weapons of mass destruction for the FEMA team just means that we are capable of operating within a WMD environment, but keep in mind that this is a FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Task Force. So, in the event that there was an incident, heaven forbid in the harbor or anywhere in the city for that matter, where we would need to deploy a WMD FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Task Force, we could operate within that environment. And that, that's the meaning of it, of us being a WMD task force. We started out first walking as a, as a Urban Search and Rescue Task Force, meaning we have technical search and rescue equipment, we have an organized group of city employees that can respond anywhere in the country. And since then, it has evolved into a WMD capability, which just means that in the event that there is a dirty bomb associated with it, that we have the protection and the additional staff... the additional staffing to operate. So that's the enhancement to the city's team as it exists right now.
The enhanced staffing, is that mainly, um...
It's hazmat. I can tell you really, the, uh...
Hazmat, okay.
The team was sixty-two people, and FEMA increased it to seventy in those additional... We already had two hazmat techs on the team originally, and they increased it by eight.
Where are they, where are they located?
These members are employed just like I am, employed on a daily basis everywhere. And for an example, on September eleventh, when we were called into action, we have a call-out process where we bring in doctors from, from the local community, firefighters, police, our animal control, or our canine handlers are from police and fire. We call them in. At our point of departure, we call it right there at Fire Station Eighty-Eight in the San Fernando Valley, and off we go. So it's, we all have other jobs.
There, there's not full-time hazmat?
No, no. Just inherently, though, the people that are hazmat people on the, on the FEMA task force are working hazmat task forces in the city of Los Angeles anyway. So they work at seventies or forty-eights or Fire Station Four.
Or they're down there at forty-eight.
Yeah.
And this money...
Is, over the last ten years, FEMA has continued to give us money in support of the program. That's, that's their cut of the deal. When, when the city council and the mayor approved this program, us participating in this program ten years ago, we were obligated to FEMA to put together the team and, and train and whatnot. And their cut was to provide us funding. And over the years, it's whatever they get out of their budget is how they divide it up, and it just so happens that this year it's seven forty.
Thank you. Thank you for calling that special, Councilman Holden.
Mr. Labange?
Oh, thank you. Hi, Chief. Did anyone go up to Seattle or back to Chicago with this federal drill that's going on? And no? No. Okay. I understand, though, that we're gearing up for one of our own. Okay, good. All right, I just wanted to know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Item twenty-five, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-four, call special by Councilmember Pacheco, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Mr. Pacheco? In the room? Let's give Mr. Pacheco a minute to re-enter council chambers.
There is a matter still on the desk, Mr. President. Item number twelve E, that Councilmember Perry had reconsidered from Friday's meeting.
Ms. Perry.
Right. I needed to clarify that. Thank you for being patient. That was an item from the ninth of May. It was, it was item twelve E, and I want you to ask my colleagues to adopt a substitute motion, and that is to waive fees for an Xbox briefing at the Grand Olympic Auditorium. The auditorium is a city-sponsored venue, so any event there with public benefit, the city will assume the cost for, for that event, much like Staples or the Dodger Stadium.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, we have clarification on the item number?
Uh, yes, it was twelve E from Friday.
Okay. Uh, members, we have previously reconsidered this item. Ms. Perry offers a substitute motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes?
Councilmember, if I can do forthwith on items nineteen and thirty-nine?
Forthwith on nineteen and thirty-nine? Is Mr. Pacheco back with us? Okay. Thirty seconds and counting on Mr. Pacheco. Are there any announcements in the meantime?
There are two special motions, Mr. President.
Let's take the special items next.
Uh, there are two specials. First one is presented by Councilmember Miskowski, seconded by Councilmember Rule, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read into the record the findings for council to consider. Since the posting of today's agenda, city officials have been made aware of new information that supports an increase of grant funding and an additional tenancy pursuant to displaced tenant relocation grants previously approved by council following a fire March seventeenth, two thousand and three, at Eight East Brooks Avenue. Immediate action is required to assist these tenants who otherwise apparently would be without shelter. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, the department requests that the council authorize the disbursement of such funds.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Special one is now before us. Members wishing to be heard of the motion itself? Ms. Miskowski.
Members, as we know, when we've had families who are in need, all of a sudden subjected to calamity, the loss of their apartments through fire, explosion, et cetera, we have set a process up, and actually it's now going to be regularized in the Housing Department, that up to $50,000, they will be able to provide assistance to tenants, um, based on a qualification, they have to be in need, and they will either be, receive a grant of about $2,000 or $5,000. We had done that in this case, up to $50,000, but there's now, it's been learned in this particular building that there are, um, two tenants who are able to supply information and now qualify, and one tenant supplied additional information and is able to qualify for a higher amount. That will increase the total amount of grant, um, by a modest amount, $8,000, and I think that's $4,000 more than the $50,000 threshold. So we need approval of the council to allow this to be received by these tenants who do qualify and are in the same situation as the others. And it is part of our process, this is when there's requests beyond the $50,000 overall per incident, that it does need to come for council for approval. So city attorney has verified this, Housing Department has verified these numbers, and I ask for a high vote.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
And there is a special two that was presented by Councilmember Labange and seconded by Councilmember White. City attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read into the record the findings for council to consider. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department has requested that the city offer a reward for information leading to the conviction of the suspect or suspects who committed the triple homicide in the Miracle Mile area last week. Immediate action is required to attempt to expeditiously solve this crime. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may consider the substance of motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Mr. Labange, it says on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Special two is now before us. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Labange.
Now, thank you, members. This was, again, another tragedy, unfortunately, in our city, but two family members and another party were in a home at six-thirty a week ago, Monday night. Robbery homicide division is working diligently on this case and ask that this motion and request of our office be put forward for this reward of this family, including a very young child who was viciously murdered that evening. Wilshire area is having community meetings with the area residents on issues related to this. I ask for your high vote and appreciate your support on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special two. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number thirty-four is still on the desk.
Ms. Miskowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Mr. Pacheco's behalf, this is a routine transfer of money from, um, certain GCP funds or neighbor trust fund monies to specific community groups in Council District Fourteen out of Council Fourteen District, uh, accounts. Well, look who's come here. Um, Mr. Pacheco had introduced a motion to just amend this from a technical point of taking it from one area to another within the Council District Fourteen portion of the salary account, and I was going to move thirty-four A, and Mr. Pacheco has joined us.
Welcome, Mr. Pacheco. Anything further, Mr. Pacheco? After making us late? Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item thirty-four. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That matter is amended and approved. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And seeing no requests from members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items, public comment for today is closed. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Wednesday, May fourteenth, to leave at noon for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused Tuesday, June third, to arrive at eleven-thirty for city business. That also meets council policy.
Ms. Miskowski is excused.
And, uh, that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Members, are there any announcements? Any announcements today? Mr. Labange? No announcements today? Do we have adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in the memory of William Olson, a San Pedro legend, who passed away last week at the age of ninety-nine. He was born in nineteen oh four in Oakland, and his father was a sea captain and moved the family to San Pedro in nineteen nineteen. Bill's career following school was as a shipwright, designing and building boats, including building, building wooden boats for the Navy during World War Two. Bill married Evelyn Peterson in nineteen sixty, only to lose her three years later through death. Throughout his career, he was frequently sought out by historians and authors seeking an expert about San Pedro and the maritime industry. He was an articulate speaker and prolific writer and poet. He also wrote columns for the old San Pedro News Pilot for many years. Bill was a meritorious historian of the Los Angeles Maritime Museum, which he helped establish twenty-five years ago. Despite his age, he still remained active and served as assistant curator for the museum, providing tours to visitors until his hospitalization last week. Dr. Pete Lee, our director of the Maritime Museum and longtime friend, described Bill as the happiest kid in San Pedro. He had a wonderful disposition and his memory was incredible. He was a charter member of the San Pedro Bay Historical Society, and its president, Art Almeida, described Bill perfectly. He loved history and he loved San Pedro. Uh, with the passing of Bill Olson, San Pedro has truly lost one of its greatest legends.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Came as a great shock to many in the Echo Park community and probably many around this horseshoe to learn that Sue Nelson, um, activist and advocate who was just in chambers quite recently, um, died on May third reportedly from injuries from being hit by a car on Sunset Boulevard in Echo Park. She was somebody who was truly a fighter. Um, I think sometimes we are, we all find ourselves on the same side, sometimes we'd find ourselves on opposite sides, but somebody who fought hard in Elysian Park to prevent the convention center from being built there many years ago, was head of the Angeles chapter of Sierra Club, and had been active in the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the Green Party. She was somebody who was tenacious, uh, somebody who would show up at, at community meetings and would often represent the community, um, many times when the community didn't have a voice, um, taking unpopular stands, um, and other times, um, taking leadership that really led, uh, the community forward. It's most tragic that she ended her life this way and apparently for some time was unidentified at the morgue, and nobody knew that it had happened when word spread this weekend in Echo Park that she had passed away. Again, people who loved her, some who hated her, I think all realized that they all mourned her and that her passing really, uh, was the end of a generation of activism in Echo Park and in Los Angeles. May she rest in peace.
Other members?
I, I just want to add, during our charter reform, uh, those two years, Sue Nelson was a regular at many of our late, late night meetings, again, fighting for specific reforms to be placed in our, our city charter, and, uh, was, really was an advocate for so, for so many of those in Los Angeles who never had a voice. So we will greatly miss her activism.
Council President, if I may...
Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to also echo the thoughts of my colleagues. When I first met Sue, we were fighting for kite hail Echo Park back when I was in my district in the early nineties. Her passion for open space was incredible, her knowledge for planning, uh, her understanding of the principles of development, and her, uh, healthy cynicism as to how deals are made were ones in which informed many people who were not tuned into those types of dynamics. And, uh, I salute her for all her advocacy. I always felt her heart was in the right place, even the delivery wasn't so smooth. But the truth of it, she meant well, and she worked hard.
Ms. Miskowski?
Let me add to that. I think Sue's beginnings were in the Brentwood community, because that's where she and her husband first settled and had their children. In the early sixties, she was very active in something called the University, University Elementary School, which was the progressive school that UCLA set up, where they actually had schoolchildren going there at UCLA to the elementary school because it was their way of teaching teachers. And Sue Nelson's children went there, and Marvin Browdy's children went there, and it's where they met in the early sixties and developed and understood each other in their passion for this wonderful open space that was behind that community in the Santa Monica Mountains. And in nineteen sixty-four, Sue Nelson and Marvin Browdy were the original founders of something called Friends of the Santa Monica Mountain Park, which was the idea behind creating a great park that today we are all reaping the benefits of. Uh, Sue's passion there was unbelievable, led to then her encouraging Marvin to run for office against a then incumbent who he defeated in nineteen sixty-five, Carl Rumberg, and, and their lives were entwined thereafter, as everyone has indicated, not always in supporting each other, but in the passion for what she believed in. And I think in, in part of what Mr. Reyes was talking about, about her incredible indomitable spirit and knowledge, um, Sue was actually asked to teach at PSYARC, the Southern California Institute of Architecture, in its early days, to teach young students who were then looking at what and how they should contribute to an urban landscape and an urban space and open space, way back in the seventies and early eighties when this wasn't even a concept. She was there instructing and teaching young students who wanted to make their life in building this city and building this city with cognizance of open space and buildings and green ideas. And she was a professor there for many, many years, so that we have a lot of future generations who have learned from her and are going on and building and contributing today. She truly is and has been an indomitable spirit. I mean, remembering her here in days when the council was filled, fighting things like receded to the sea, um, they were things that she stood for passionately, uh, and always will. And I think it was fascinating that she then moved from the West Side to Echo Park and continued that passion and those same principles, and brought the sense of open space and green space and commitment to that portion of where she lived, uniting it all together. So she really will be an amazing spirit that is lost now to the city.
Other tributes? Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to say for Sue Nelson, and wonderful tributes that each of those who spoke talked about somebody, and that's really what makes the city. When you were talking, Janice, about the fighters of, uh, people coming to the charter reform and know how people liked Sue Nelson, but really she's right up there who were so tenacious on keeping parks parks and the importance of that aspect of our open space and our land. And that's so tragic to hear of this, Eric, and, uh, an unfortunate mishap on Sunset Boulevard, but, uh, and it is nice to help people transform and, and go across the city. And I, and I look and there's just about a few in the council chambers now, but we see the faces of which Sue was just here, as Eric mentioned, like two weeks ago, uh, but the faces of people who've come here, that's truly what makes the city. It's unfortunate that she lost her life in an accident, but she did contribute. I met her years and years ago on the first, well, it wasn't the first master plan, but the nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven master plan for Griffith Park, which we just started to do again here twenty-five years later. She was always, wherever it was in the city, if it had to do with a park and open space, Sue Nelson was there. Sue Nelson was there.
Other tributes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. And before adjourning... I just want to tell you all, you all know that the ad hoc committee on the budget is not meeting today at two, especially for those who watch us through Channel Thirty-Five or on the radio or telephone. We're not meeting today, tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. This meeting is adjourned.